Active notice, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of municipal council for the year 2024, which is publicized as a legal advertisement in the Herald News and the Record on January 5th, 2025. Further notice that this meeting was given on Friday prior to the meeting by posting said notice on the bulletin board at City Hall and on the City of Clifton website, which noticed stated that formal action may or may not be taken on the matters to come before the municipal council.
Councilman Damato.
Present.
Councilman Gibson, absent. Councilman Koloje, absent. Councilman Latona.
Here.
Councilwoman Tina, here. Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Here.
Mayor Grabowski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start with actually item 10 because Mr. Friend is here representing Aruba Lounge, so.
Mayor, can we have a few minutes? My client was supposed to meet me here and he must be delayed for some reason.
Okay.
Mayor, I can too. On, there's another entertainment hearing that was supposed to be on today for La Mayora. That's been adjourned at the request of the applicant's attorney. That's A9 on the agenda. So I know Mr. Vargas is here from Dubatni Sid on that one, but it's adjourned, so you can, you can leave, Mr. Vargas, if you want.
The meeting was adjourned for A9?
Yes.
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 Okay, did he just adjourn it now? Do you know when he adjourned it?
It was adjourned earlier today.
Earlier today?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, can we make an announcement? Because I don't think that any of the objectors or anyone who wants to be heard on these entertainment licenses realizes they could be on Zoom. So this is the first time that somebody has been on Zoom as an objector. So I believe that we need to make sure if we put it on the website, that if you're, you're objecting or in favor, whatever your position is, you don't have to come. You can be on Zoom. And actually, in thinking about that, I think we probably should amend the ordinance because we should put that right in the ordinance that because when they're given the notice, the meeting will be held on such and such for a new license, and now we want to amend it for renewals, we should put in that you can appear via Zoom.
Sure, we can put out a PSA on that and make sure that going forward that the public knows or they can appear via Zoom.
So let's, let's start with action one.
Mayor, you might find it here.
I'm here, okay.
Mayor, do you want to make a motion to make sure the items are?
Oh, yes, before we start. Mayor, I'd like to make, and I think it really worked out so well last time. And Kathleen, thank you for putting that added announcement in the paper.
Yep.
That we can take action in the work session. Why are we doing things twice? Can we have the votes for the resolutions that we take action in the, in the work session be the final votes? There's no reason not to. There's no reason not to.
Ms. Kathleen, it has.
Well, here's, here's the mayor three years.
Yes, of course.
And I'm just gonna play devil's advocate. I'm not against or pro or against or anything like that, but I believe maybe the logic behind as to why we're taking a vote out there is that we have an opportunity to hear from the public, right? So if you're in the work session, we're just all just speaking among ourselves. Over there, we may have thoughts, but it might, our ideas might change once we hear from the public. So if you're saying maybe switching the public session to this session or opening up anything that they want to discuss on, maybe, but I think if we just do it one time here, we don't give the public a chance to weigh in to, for us to consider our opinion on the topic. So that's just, again, playing devil's advocate on the floor.
I was more against it.
I, I think it worked out. I think it worked out very well. It, we need to do something that we're not repetitive. And quite honestly, the, it's a public meeting, people see the agenda, and in all the years I'm on council, I've really, I can't remember when somebody came and said that this is it. So if that requires a roll call vote, I would like to make that motion. It worked out well. We need to do something to streamline these meetings, and there's no reason to do it twice. Thank you again, Kathleen, for posting that and the, the legal ad. So I hope somebody seconds it.
Do we need to change that rules of order? Not now, I would think.
The order doesn't change. The order doesn't change, it's just the, the procedure to allow the vote for, for an action item. And if, you know, the order would change or the procedure would change if you put a secondary two-minute comment prior to the action items in work session and then have a secondary comment in public session. But you can always make the comments and you can always recall the vote or do the vote different again later in the evening, so.
I mean, if that's.
We may or may not take action. So we may or may not take action in here.
Right, so that's, that's for that for a second if we can, Mayor. You know, you said we can recall the vote.
Mm-hmm.
So is that an, an option that will be available? Do we need to kind of write that into that we can just say, a speaker has come up and I want to recall, do I need a second?
You would need a motion to reconsider and then you.
A motion to reconsider that I would need a second.
Too.
Thank you.
See, that's, that's where the trick is, right?
Well, no, it's not the trick.
Yeah. Oh, well, that's, that's where the rub is, whatever.
It's rubber tools of void.
So maybe the better procedure is to put a two-minute precursor to any items in public, in the work session. So anybody that would want to comment on any of the action items.
In the very beginning.
Very beginning. So you would have a two-minute in the front and a five-minute in the back, and this way you can, you can oscillate those type of, not oscillate, but you can insert those kind of comments on those items.
That's a, that's a good compromise. Start the meeting at the work session and say, is there anyone here and that wants to comment on any of the action items where there is a resolution where we will be taking action or whatever?
I think that's a lot, just say, just open it up. So if you want to comment on an action item.
What you can do is always limit the time. Right, so you, so Andy will tell you that you probably can't limit the comment to specific topics, but you can limit the time.
Right, that's what we said.
Instead of having a five-minute, you can have a two-minute here and a five-minute there, two-minute here.
Right, I think that's a good compromise. Two minutes? So is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Any objections?
Over here for Sherman, please. Are we supposed to wait out there for the, the Nigga?
One of the, the licenses?
Yeah.
Which one?
Which one? Because one was carried.
Oh, uh, what's the name of it?
All the Arubas here today.
Aruba's on.
La Mayora, Mayor.
That one was canceled.
La Mayora is canceled.
They called in and he carried, he asked for the carry.
It'll be a new date.
It'll be, will it be the next meeting?
I don't know if it'll be the next meeting.
Be up to 60 days.
Yeah.
Well, then, will you, uh, inform us?
We, public notice will be sent out.
Okay.
Should have been.
They have to re-notice.
No, no.
Okay. It's a new license, correct?
Yes.
They will have to re-notice to property owners within 200 feet. They have to send out a re-notice.
Okay.
So you will get it.
Yeah, we weren't informed, okay.
Now, just after.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, just within a couple hours, they called.
And did they give a reason why? You know, it's so, you know, if the attorneys can come, what's the reason why they, they asked for it or?
Um, in the letter that we received from the Botany group, there was some allegations in there that there were prior matters involving the police that responded to the location, and the attorney said he was wholly unaware of that, and he wanted to get that information.
Wasn't he available with the, the CAD report? Did he get the CAD report?
He got the CAD report, but some of the stuff apparently goes back several years.
Okay, so will be, you'll be re-noticed.
Re-noticed. Sorry to.
Sorry.
We didn't know either.
We didn't know either. It does happen.
Is anybody here for Duma Entertainment? Or are you all here for La Mayora?
All right, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
You'll get re-notice though. Make sure you tell your neighbors.
Oh, we will.
Can we make a note that that meeting starts at 6:00?
Then we, yeah, we have to make sure, well, that's Kathleen. The notice will say it starts at 6:00.
We have friends, right?
Yes, your friend's right.
Okay, let's.
We have a, we have a entertainment license renewal application from Duma Entertainment and Aruba Lounge. The applicant and his attorney is here. If we could have the attorney enter your appearance.
Gerald Friend, Brendan Wenzel, on behalf of the applicant, Duma Entertainment.
Okay, sir, and state your name and position with the.
Hello, my name is Hans Peña. I am the manager.
Okay. Um, before we open the matter to the public and to the council, has there been any changes in the number of seats in your establishment since your last entertainment application?
Number of seats?
Yes. Okay, has there been any changes in any off-street parking since the last application?
Do you rephrase that?
Do you offer any parking?
No.
All right, so all parkings on street?
Yeah.
Okay. You serve food at the establishment?
Yes.
And do you also serve alcohol, correct?
Yes.
All right, has there been any change in the ratio of food beverages sales to the alcohol sales since your last application for an entertainment?
No.
Can you describe any changes that have occurred at your establishment since the date of your last application?
None.
No?
No.
Have, do you have any noise control measures in place?
Uh, me personally, I wouldn't know about that. It's, because I'm just the manager, I don't really know all of that, but it should be the same as every year we came. There hasn't really changed that much.
All right, do you have any security measures in place?
Uh, yeah, we have three securities every night. Every night at the end of the party, we come out, you know, I even come outside and I instruct the customers to go home, you know, to not cause noises services and all of that.
All right, what are the current hours of operation for your establishment?
Uh, so 8:00 PM to 2:30.
Can you describe for the council the type of entertainment and the hours of entertainment you're seeking?
The hours of entertainment are from 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM. After that, we, well, it's just DJs, live DJs. After that, we'll just put the TVs on and put some music on there.
Okay, so the only form of entertainment you have is DJ?
Yeah.
And are you seeking any changes with regard to your present renewal application with regard to the entertainment you're up there?
No.
Are there any members of the public here that would like to be heard on this application? Okay, please step up, sir.
On behalf of Botany Village, which I am a trustee down there for the last 25 years, Aruba has been one of our best supporters when it comes to the Christmas, the Christmas tree lighting, let's put it that way, and whenever we have an event, they always help us out. So I hope you all give him a positive attitude tonight.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard?
George Silver.
Okay, if not, then we can turn it over to the council members.
I have some questions. Good evening. First of all, you're the manager. Do you have a letter on file that he is authorized to speak on behalf of the owner?
I don't have, I don't have a letter. I have verbal confirmation from the owner that he is authorized to speak.
Why didn't the owner come?
He's out. He's on vacation, basically. I came the last time, also.
All right, it says on your current of operations, I'm reading your application, it says daily, 11:00 AM to 2:00, 2:00 AM, and then it says optional hours, 8:00 PM to 2:30 AM?
Yeah.
What are these optional hours?
Those are, well, 11:00 AM, we, it's like, I guess, if you wanted to do brunch and stuff like that, but we don't do that. We just open from 8:00 PM to 2:30 AM. Entertainment from 10:00 to 1:00.
And you serve, what's the ratio of food to beverage?
50/50.
Okay, and you only start serving dinner at 8:00 PM?
Yeah. Like, then we used to open at 6:00, but it just wasn't working for us, so.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions from any council? No, just the best advice, stay ahead of it, be a good neighbor, because it causes less problems, so.
Oh, yeah.
You want it, you want it to go like this, not like that, one cell. Just be a good neighbor, keep the noise down, and that's all I have. So I have a motion to approve.
There are a lot of other things other than noise complaints when you look at these CAD reports. So I don't know if you can get somebody to, to be there, but this is a lot of stuff, a lot of problems. I understand they're not noise, Jerry, so I know where you're going with that, but this is a lot. Look at the pages, look at it, it's, look at it.
Well, okay, unfortunately, if there's a call up to Botany Village for a motor vehicle accident, it's on our CAD report.
Well, these are more than motor vehicles. This is fighting, this is this, this is this. I mean, come on, it's just.
Unfortunately, there are two other establishments in the area that also use the parking, you know, the city parking lot, and we don't know if they're coming out of Aruba or coming out of there, but even the reports on the fighting, many of them, the policemen, they got there, they say they were unfounded, and, well, that, it was at 250 Parker Avenue, not at 240 where our establishment is. So I, I tried to save time for tonight, because I know your meetings have been running very late.
Thanks for doing that work.
I appreciate it. In terms of each and every one of the issues that were raised in the CAD report, and I think there were like two or three that affected Aruba itself, and of those, even one or two of those, when the police got there, they said the complaint was unfounded. So are we perfect? No, but, you know, we're a good, we're a good citizen down in Botany Village, and we've been there now for eight years, and hopefully you'll approve our application.
Motion approved.
Yeah, motion approved.
I'll second.
Any objections? Thanks, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Starting with action item one. Corrective action plan reported. Implement audit recommendations.
Move it.
Second.
No, my objection, I'm sick of having repetitive audit recommendations and then putting the nerve, it's not under our control.
Okay, one objection. A2, walking path at various parks improvement project. Move it.
Second.
Can I just put one caveat, one thing? Can we, through legal, if, if we vote to approve this tonight, we have a lot of these things that could possibly fall under a grant? So if we approve this tonight, in the meantime, if we do hire a new grant writer, do we have that flexibility just to have him confirm that that's not on the table before we spend 1.2 million in ARPA money? Because I, just so you know, I looked at, I seen Hoboken last night, they did walking paths and, and handicapped and ADA stuff, and they got it from a grant. So I will vote to approve it. I would just like, if we get a new grant writer, that the one thing he works at before we use that ARPA money and not spend it. So that's my only.
Yes, I mean, I would just suggest that that would be one of the first things that we would have the new grant writer look at, you know, because I guess some of these projects are ready to go.
Right.
I also, no objection, but I didn't get an answer on mine. Where is the Mount Prospect walking path? We had, and I voted against it because all we do is, we had an outside person rate which parks needed to. We've all gotten the complaints, we've seen it on social media and pictures.
It's bad.
With unsafe walk, Mount Prospect walking path, yet we're doing walking paths and it's nowhere on this list.
We've been put on notice.
I asked at the last, we put, we were put on notice and correct for an unsafe condition. So I asked at the last meeting, what happened to Mount Prospect Park? And I don't have any answers.
So we do that to move for next one and add that.
But I'd like to know where, you know, can you, this, the copy report that God only knows what it is, that is one of the worst. I would like to know, see a copy of this report because actually I don't think we've ever seen it. We've heard about it, but we've never seen it.
I will.
Are no objections?
And what do we do? Hold on, we were put on notice, this is to legal, we were put on notice that that was an unsafe condition. So don't we have a liability now?
Uh, we do have a liability if there's no markings there. Well, we at, at a minimum have the obligation to warn the public of the dangerous condition until we can be repaired.
And also, at one of our very first open space meetings, Jason from DPW, the director of DPW was there, and he suggested that DPW could fix a lot of these walking paths. So where do we stand on that? He was like, why aren't we utilizing, we can, we can do this? So can we get an answer on that as well, please?
Yes.
It kind of went the wayside. Gary, this was before your time.
A3 is tabled.
Yes.
A4 authorization.
Why is it tabled?
Why it's tabled? Because it was put in and being pulled out of a capital bond, which is not allowed, and it has to be in an operating account, so we have to kind of retool relative to where the money's coming from. So it's not a, doesn't have the five-year life component that is required.
It's tabled, so.
But that's troublesome. So we had a purchasing.
It's tabled, so.
Wait, sorry. We can vote on table, so until we vote on table, I can ask a question.
Actually, it wasn't tabled, it was polled.
It wasn't tabled.
It's polled.
Well, then we can still ask a question. How did the, how did the purchasing agent and the CFO sign off on this?
Oh, they polled it after it was put on.
Of course, we caught it.
Right. Okay, A4 authorization to approve the award of the contract.
Move it.
Second.
Objections, A5 authorization to approve the memorandum.
I, I have a question on four. And I, why wasn't this put in when we got all that money from Green Acres for this park? We put up the cement poles, but left them that had no lights. This is why we need this new engineer to start doing stuff properly, because who puts in, have you been there and seen it? It's the, and there's no lights. You put in for everything.
Well, no, I, I, Mayor.
Of course not.
Part of the, no, as in this council refused to fund it, and that's why they stopped at the stanchions. If we had gone ahead with putting the money in, we could have completed it all years ago. So we built it in phases because this council wasn't willing to fund it at the time. So A4, I'd like a motion to approve.
I think that's already, already out.
Okay, so we're good. Okay, A5 authorization to approve memorandum.
Second.
Objections. A6 authorization for. Oh, no, I'm sorry, if, if votes count now here, I'm a no vote on that.
Which one?
A5.
A5.
So the public knows this is, we finally settled the contract with the FMBA.
And it will cost us $10 million over the next four years. Okay, well, A1, no vote. A6 authorization for.
Move it.
Second.
Yeah, we did provide that.
Yes, you made it open-minded. No objections, A7 authorization to move increased police department ordinance fees.
Move it.
Second. Objections, A8 authorization to request removal of two members from the historical commission.
Move it.
Second. A9 is, that's adjourned. Can we finish that? So then, A11 authorization to approve request by the State County Unico.
I'll move it with the caveat that I do every year, that there's no alcohol on City Hall property.
And objections. A12 authorization to approve a block party on Martin Avenue on September 6th. Move it. Second.
Just one suggestion for these block parties, because we've had a problem in the past. While, while they give us a list of people who signed it, we have no idea to, to know if this is the majority of the residents in the blocks that are affected, or is it, you know, so we need to have something that says, these are, you know, 20 residents that this, on between this and this, and then we can know it. Because we've had that problem before. I don't remember which one it was, but we did, so.
Reviewing the, reviewing the applications, though, they do put addresses on there.
They do.
Do all departments approve it? Everybody's all good?
But that's not what I'm saying. They do have the, but Gary's saying they put the addresses. I understand that, I can see the addresses, but I have no way of knowing if this is the majority of the residents on that block or not. Because it could be, you know, it could be 100 people and there's 10 listed.
It was 14.
Okay, A13 approve, Block Party on Plymouth Road.
Move it.
Second, with the same caveat.
Objections, 14 authorization to approve request.
Move it.
Recession permit, no objections. A15.
Second.
Authorization to accept grant funding from New Jersey Department of Health.
Move it.
Move it.
Objections, A16 authorization to approve revisions of chapter 215.
Move it.
Second.
No objections. All right, so we'll go right into discussions. 2015 municipal budget.
Well, I was hoping that we would set a date relative to a special meeting and we could have this conversation and kind of move the budget forward with, with maybe some additional recommendations from, from finance, but at this point, you know, you're going into your 60 days of introduction.
I thought that was supposed to happen this past week.
Uh, well, Mr. Riegen was on vacation and the CFL was on vacation, so we've got to late a week or so, so be it, but if we have a.
Well, to our council privilege, I was gonna make a motion for next Tuesday or Thursday.
Thursday's a planning board.
Yeah, planning board is Thursday, we can't do.
I could do Wednesday, I could do Monday.
We can do Monday, too.
I'll make any night work.
I'm available any night.
Mayor, what, where do I go with?
I could do Monday or Tuesday.
Let's do Monday.
If we can do, I'd rather do Tuesday, because our colleague has medical appointments on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so.
Oh, okay, well, then Tuesday's fine.
Tuesday works. What's the, what's the time?
Yep, give me a time, so Tuesday.
Would be evening, 6:00, 6:30?
What, did we say Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Can you do Tuesday?
Yeah, I could do Tuesday.
And you want to give it a time limit, 6:30 to?
Tuesday to 26th?
Yeah.
At what time?
Could we do 6?
6:30?
There.
I could do 6:30.
Could we do 6?
6:00, 6:30?
Joe, can you do 6? Can you do?
Mayor, I'll be on vacation next week.
Oh, okay.
Can you zoom in?
I'm gonna be on vacation next, I figured I'd ask.
Okay, so I guess, you can hold the meeting with that. Want to do 6 or 6:30?[1517.66] When I do six or six thirty?
It takes two votes anyway. I mean, six thirty, she works for everyone else.
Right? Yeah, I get it.
Okay, Tuesday, that's what date the, what day is it?
Six.
Six thirty, people.
Okay.
Tuesday to 26th at six thirty?
Yes, of course it is.
Okay.
People can speak.
Discussion item two, forensic audit, verbal discussion only.
Well, verbal discussion only was there was no back, backup at the time that we memorialized the agreement, but the, the draft was submitted with the, with the verbiage of, of draft removed, so that is the final without the response of the city, so, Mr.
What response of the city? Did the city respond?
We do have, we do have a submission that's going to them that was not incorporated in, in the.
Okay, so, so this report was dated July 15th. So you're telling me for the last, today is what, the 16th? August 19th. August 19th. So over a month, the city didn't respond?
Well, we did, we had the internal meetings with the various components.
Did you send something to, to these people?
No, it's not completed yet, that comes out of the, that comes out of the finance.
Can we get these people to come to the next meeting to, I believe they, that was part of their agreement with us?
Yep, yep.
That they will come and talk about this because I think it's very important. I think this was a great report. I think it was well worth $150,000. There's things that we need to do immediately, it's, it's. Look at, just, just take a look at all my yellow stickies of things.
Number second.
So, again, it is on the website. I do suggest everyone take the time and read it and pay attention to the recommendations. Look at each category because there are things that we need to do.
A little procedural cleanup, and in fact, you know, I'm gonna throw this out for my colleagues to consider. I would like to ask of our city manager, Mr. DiMarzo, to put together a corrective action plan that, you know, addresses the recommendations of the report. Get that to us and then give us quarterly updates on how that plan is going.
Well, I, I think that's a great, great, great suggestion, but some of the, it's very upsetting when I look at unused money in the bond anticipation notes, the healthcare that we didn't collect the proper money for the chapter 78 requirements and lost money. How, how do we know that we're on schedule for that for this year? We could be repeating that mistake again. So a corrective action plan is, is, but, but look at the audit report. We keep getting the same darn findings. Well, after that, we've got to do something, but looking at the healthcare benefits is one line, is, it's just, you know, looking to see money. It's, we lost money and how do we know we're not doing that again?
Yeah, so I.
In 2019, this resulted in a 212,996 dollars and 99 cents in deductions, not taken out that should have been.
How much was that?
212,996,000 dollars. And they did some corrections, however, there's still 251 incorrect deductions taken. So how do we know what, if it's, if we're, if it's correct for this year?
Well, again, those are the things that will be put in our report relative to what will be resubmitted as a counter, um, opposition paper, but I already have the 42625 on the resolution for corrective action plan to be accepted, so.
Wonderful.
It was on there.
So it's on already?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, what page was that, the chapter 78?
I just, I, I'll have to give it to you, I have to go back and, and look at it.
Because that was for 2019 or the 2023?
I believe it was 19, if that's what I said.
So then it would imply that it got corrected.
No, 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 it still said, no, it wasn't, there was still more on 23, so.
We have some document on that.
And the, the other thing is, look at the pilots, look at the pilots. If we were fully taxed, we'd get almost $8 million. And I'm, if I'm correct, I believe I am legal, that the pilot programs are non-negotiable binding, and it would be, both parties would have to agree to change that pilot. And in the revaluation that we're due, is, they're not going to be affected by that revaluation.
That's for the pilot program. It's an agreement between.
Great, exactly.
Mayor.
Yes.
For you. To legal, do we have a set of parameters in place that signal whether or not a specific project qualifies for a pilot or do we just go project by project?
I think it's larger than project by project.
Would that be something that is useful to at least give some guidance to count? Like, we can decide on what the guidelines are for the projects that, you know, I'm all in favor of pilots for, you know, affordable senior housing, things that have little financial upside but would be, provide great community benefit, you know, make sure that we lock in community benefit clauses in the contracts, but, I, I mean, is that something we can do? Set a, a, a series of policies that if these conditions are met, you qualify for a pilot agreement?
That's both.
Uh, it's, it's, the concept of a pilot exists for a municipality to give, to incentivize particular development, like you said, senior housing. It may not be very profitable, so we say, you're gonna pay this fixed amount instead of your, uh, otherwise property taxes to incentivize this desired development. So, you know, everyone is gonna be a little different because it depends what you want. If you want them to build senior housing, you know, you're gonna negotiate whatever you negotiate, whatever works, whatever gets the developer to say yes. If it's gonna be, you know, recreation complex, it is probably gonna be different terms. So it, I think it'd be challenging to have a, a set of parameters. In the end, it's always up to the city whether or not it wants to put pilot agreements.
There's different ways it could be structured. What these were structured clearly don't benefit the taxpayers. They clearly don't, and they're long term. I mean, some of these are 50 years. It's, it's, like, it's, it's.
Yes.
Glad I never looked it up either.
At the end of the day, the pilot programs are good, we just didn't do a good job negotiating them, at the end of the day. It is good for the town, very much so, but when we talk about senior housing, everyone never says about, it's about senior housing, I know it sounds great on paper, but these developers aren't doing it for free, it's not charity. They're raising their rent. It ain't like we're getting the same amount for 20 or 30 years with minimum increases and they're keeping their rent low on our seniors and disabled. They're raising those rents 3% every year. So as they are raising rents 3% a year on $2 million in rental income, we're getting 3% more a year off the measly 26 or 56,000 that we wrote into the pilot program. So, to my con.
You're right, Tony.
It is. Pilot programs are good, we just did not do a good job. And again, what I learned from other towns, you get a percentage of revenue. So we have talked to our new redevelopment council, that if we do these again, you get a percentage of revenue, so if someone like On3 or whoever brings in more revenue, you get 15% of that every year, so both sides benefit. Because we can take Quest. Quest is paying us the same amount for 10 years. How much growth is Quest and On3 getting? How much more rent every year is On3 getting from Quest? How much more?
Sold it to Quest.
Right, okay.
On3 sold that piece of property to Quest.
So they're not getting rent?
Right, but they, they recoup their money.
So how much more money is, does Quest make every year running that, growing, growing, and we're getting the same amount for 10 years? And after 10 years, we get a 5% increase for another 5 or 10 years till we get the next one. So, yes, we're gonna do better in the future, let's move on. We're stuck now on some of these.
I want to talk a little bit about Quest because I think it's, what's important is the council at the time was in competition with other municipalities in order to get this, this is a regional east coast testing facility. And so you can look at it strictly as, is it gonna be a tax generator? But I know that Steve Vitale at the time, and I agreed with them, that this wasn't just about collecting revenue, this was about creating high-paying jobs for Clifton residents. And in fact, the pilot actually states in it that they need to give preferential treatment to hiring Clifton people first. So to characterize it as somehow, you know, we made a bad deal, you may, I, I can, I can agree that we may have differing opinions on trying to bring high-paying jobs to Cliftonites, and that's okay. Uh, but the bottom line is, is that that particular pilot was structured in such a fashion that we were in competition with two other towns. And so they were, they were playing a little bit of, hey, this is what Councilman Leto is gonna give us, Councilman Klose, what are you gonna give us? Hey, Councilman Damada, here's what I got from Councilman Klose, what are you guys gonna do for us? And so it may look on the surface as if it was a bad deal, but the intent at the time was to bring in high-paying jobs for Clifton residents, and I would argue that that was successful.
And if we didn't get Quest, we could have sent it to LabCorp, whoever. If you don't think we should have done the opposite, what you're saying they did to us, that's the problem. We should have been sending notices to all of the labs, LabCorp, Quest and everyone and saying, what are you gonna do for us? Because if you don't think any of those other places want to be on that facility with a hospital and, and a teaching hospital and a medical center, that's the difference where we agree to disagree, so.
Well, but to be factual.
Mayor.
The orange negotiation.
Josh still has the floor, so.
And I just want to correct, because to be factual about this, their competitors weren't looking for a site, they weren't looking to consolidate their three facilities on the east coast into one. This was the only game in town. So the idea that we can call up someone else, we can call up ShopRite and say, hey, King said they're gonna come in, you want to come in? They're gonna be like, we got a building, what are you talking about coming in? And so it's a little bit of an unfair characterization to say that there could be a competition between people who aren't even in the market. That would be like me trying to buy a house and you saying, Tony, you need to, you need to give me an offer on that house, and, and you're like, but I'm, I got a house, I'm not buying a house.
I believe what they're talking about, the Quest, is labeled on the pilot analysis as Isabella Street urban renewal.
Correct.
To give you an idea, 2023 pilot billing for Quest was 646,083 dollars. If we collected full taxes on that property in 2023, it would have been 2,242,452 dollars. So figures lie, but liars don't figure.
Yes, but, but the, but the difference, this is where we disagree, the difference of the proportion we got, we would get from that number, we are getting more this way.
Okay, um, discussion three, the vehicle.
Oh, yes, I just, again, another verbal, just a, just a quick over glean, I know there's been a lot of questions about the vehicle fleet, and we continue to define who has the vehicles, where the vehicles are, what the age of the vehicles are, the leasing, and we are working to upload all those various components into vehicle maintenance and fleet maintenance programs. So I did want to let you know that there is a steady reduction in the fleet and a more refinement. We found that there was anomalies with the purchase of some of the vehicles, that they weren't task-specific, and so they were not able to be used for what they were purchased for, so that, so those vehicles have been rotated into a more administrative, administrative sense, but there's been a lot of, a lot of questions about the vehicle fleet, and that information has been uploaded into the vehicle maintenance programs and we're working through them there.
Mayor, through you.
Yes.
Will this report have, because I've yet to, earlier this year, I know Bill made the motion, and I believe, I mean, I know the majority agreed to it, I don't know, but it was unanimous, I don't remember that. We were to give back 20 vehicles, right? Wasn't it 20? Were those vehicles?
May budget meeting.
May budget meeting? Okay, thank you, Tony, thank you. Were those vehicles given back yet?
There's, there's a, there's a number, I don't, it might even be more than 20 at this point, that are, that are on the auction block that have been.
No, those, these were leased vehicles, these weren't owned vehicles, we can't, we can't put on the auction block a vehicle that was leased.
Whatever was, the ones that were purchased, right? And so those leased.
No, this, I'm asking for leased, the motion was.
Leased vehicles were the leased vehicles that was suggested by council, with cost council, approximately about $60,000 to return those vehicles in the, because you're breaking the leases. As the leases expired, those, some of the vehicles went back, and some of the extended, some of the vehicles that we have at this point were repurposed because the initial purchase were, was the wrong specs for what the mission of those vehicles were. So is, it is a constant flow of, of, of maintenance at this point and getting a hold of where those vehicles are. So if it's an exact number you're looking for, I don't have that number this evening, but.
I didn't expect you, I asked if in the future, can you please tell us if those, we, we made a motion, 20 vehicles, we didn't specify which vehicles were supposed to go back, we said 20, at least 20. So if those vehicles went back, and.
Again, the, the lease.
I understand, but.
Specific to lease vehicles, you're locked into leases.
But locked in for what, how many years?
Mr. DiMarzo, I'm sorry, Mr. DiMarzo.
Wait, Tony, wait, I'm not done.
We're coming.
We're locked in for how many years? We're told it's extended and this, this to me is like a Ponzi scheme. I'm surprised that the, the attorney general or the comptroller, the state comptroller, hasn't looked at this. How do you get out of these things if you're saying, oh, we can't give it back because the residual value is less than what the book value is? I mean, come on, or, or market value. This is, how do you get out of it? This is just like, just continuing to bleed and bleed and bleed. And that is one of the things that are in the audit report as well.
When the leases expire, the vehicle goes back.
But we can't get when they expire.
Mr. DiMarzo, that's not happening.
It's not happening.
Because I, I have leases that were supposed to expire last year, and I don't think those vehicles got turned in. I have other leases that should have expired already. I don't think they were turned in.
You're looking at dated information and the, and the.
It's not dated.
The conversation this evening is, is that we are working through a very detailed sheet for vehicle maintenance, so you're not looking at a stack of paperwork with four or five different, different areas.
I understand, but I got a city report from Enterprise in this city that says we're in month 42 of 48. Month 48 came and we still kept the vehicles. So how can that be? And how can we owe money?
I can't say, I can't make that representation because the, the one that you're looking at is dated.
It's dated, but it says month 42 of 48, expiration 11/30/24, 11/30/24, 2/28/25.
I can pizza bet that if those, if those leases has expired, those leases went back.
Please double check if that's all for us, please.
Understood.
Question four is section 27325, emergency orders and administrative fees.
I think there's no question that the administrator should be, should, fee should be raised. I'm still, and I did look up, I believe it was Montclair, I believe I looked up Wayne, a few towns. Montclair adds a fine. The fine can range anywhere from $500 to $2,000 a day for uncut grass.
That, we, we also have a enforcement process where summonses are issued.
We do?
Yes.
But what, but that's up to the judge?
That's up to the judge, or he was taken to court, but.
But how many have they taken to the court? None?
Yes.
We just.
He, he said he regularly, he, his normal practice prior to what we're suggesting in his memo was, he would issue a notice of violation, provide 10 days for the property owner to correct the problem. If it wasn't corrected in 10 days, he would then have an emergency order issued, give them an additional 10 days, but he would also simultaneously with doing that, issue summonses for, for the violations and, you know, they would get a court date that would be resolved through the municipal court. So, so that is being done as well.
Whatever is, we need to do something different because it's not working.
Yeah, it's not working.
By the time, by the time it comes to the city, right, to even file the complaint, to even start that process, that means it's at some level that someone called, so we're already two weeks behind, three weeks behind.
That's what is encompassed in the suggestion that we're making today. The state law requires, after it's brought to our attention, we have to give the property owner at least 10 days to remediate the situation before we can do anything.
And is that each time, so if it happens again and again?
Yes, 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 if, if, if it's remediated and there's another problem, we have to go through the same process.
So basically, you're cutting the time down from, like, the extra 10 days that we were giving now to strictly 10 days?
10 days, where he's issuing both.
Step forward, thank you.
That's a step forward and raising it.
He's issuing the notice of violation and he's issuing the emergency order at the same time, and at the conclusion of the 10 days, rather than issuing the emergency order then, he will be scheduling the work and issuing a summons.
Perfect, thank you very much for, for doing that.
Councilman Klose.
So, I'm the mayor, through you to, to council, is there a way, um, is there a way to put in an appeal process? Because, and I agree with everyone, and we've been talking about this for, for years, maybe decades, that there are always a handful of bad apples that are gonna wind up taking advantage of the law. But my concern is, is that going after the handful of bad apples is now gonna actually hurt a regular citizen. And so, you know, I'll use myself as an example, I forgot to cut the grass this week, I'm going on vacation, I'm not gonna be back to Labor Day, and you guys, you know, come by on that weekend and put down a, a notice of violation and you put down the, the summons on the same day, but I'm on vacation for two weeks. And so now when I come back, I'm in court, something I clearly would have taken care of, had I known. I could take that to the little old lady that lives down the street from me, who needs help trying to find a contractor to fix her sidewalk, and it's gonna take longer than 10 days for her to do that. So is there some sort of stay process involved to help those little guys?
Yes, there, there's provisions in the current ordinance that if the homeowner reaches out and for whatever reason they are unable to do an abatement within that 10-day period, it gives the zoning code official the discretion to extend that. And he said that he regularly does that, if, if, you know, because we want, at the end of the day, we want cooperation, we want the property to be brought into compliance, and if somebody has a hardship, if somebody has something that they're not able to.
Medical issue, right.
Able to do within that 10 days, he regularly extends the time as long as they're working with us. Um, and that's, that, there's, there's language in the current ordinance that provides him with that discretion.
So then the only other question I have is, it looks like the third paragraph on the sheet says something to the effect of the zoning officer recommends that the current administrative fee of $100, which is assessed under the statute, be raised by $30 to, to 35. I'm assuming that's a typo, and it's 135?
Well, raise an additional $30 to a total of either 130 or 135.
So which one are we going with, folks?
How about 150?
Yeah.
150 is good.
150 sounds good to me.
150.
Assuming that's statutorily permissible.
Um, yeah, I mean, the only issue that we had that I discussed with the zoning officer is, is that the administration fee has to be tied to the cost of regulation to the city.
Well, you think of the amount of time.
Amount of time it takes to go out there.
Plus the amount of mailing, doesn't, do we mail certified mail? That's gone up, right?
And they post, they send somebody out to the property.
Right, so that has to be, probably 150 is too late.
So I just want to remind everyone how to get out of these fees, just cut your lawn.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, so just, just cut your lawn and you won't have to get.
Well, I also think there's a problem with construction, where houses, buildings under construction, the construction site, they just let the, the grass go, they don't care.
Well, we put it under D six, there's, there's a bunch of enforcements that we're recommending, and, so you can review that, so that's a, that's a kind of.
All right, so we'll leave that.
So the suggestion is to.
150.
150.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you, Tony.
Get ahead of it for us.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tommy. Andy, thank you.
The five, discussion five, the job titles that did not receive salary increases.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I brought this up at the last council meeting. First, I, I want to start off by saying, I think it's great that we finally, as we were able to pass the FMBA contract, so yay to us all here. Um, with that said, uh, with anticipating us passing a budget, I want to bring this back to my colleagues as to how will we address this. So just so the public knows what I'm referring to, and I apologize, I'm starting to say it's going, but, okay. Um, this memo, which is submitted to us by legal states, Mayor Grabowski and council members. Please accept this correspondence in response to Councilwoman Pino's request for a list of the job titles that did not receive salary increases because same was denied by the council. The following titles, titles were affected, and they are health officer, chief emergency medical tech, second assistant medical attorney, um, municipal attorney, I'm sorry, confidential secretary, purchasing agent, administrative analyst, deputy city clerk, chief financial officer, municipal engineer, municipal court administrator, management information systems specialist, and director of public works. So with that said, um, as we are hopefully wrapping up the budget and we are now settling with, uh, the unions, how are we going to address these individuals? Many of them are department heads that have been keeping things going as we struggle to find our own way.
Mr. DiMarzo, city clerk be listed on that also?
Well, each one that's not within a union, and again, there was like, there's thirty-plus or minus titles that are not covered with the union. And so, yes, the, the quick answer is yes. The bullet list that, uh, that Councilwoman Pino put together is accurate. And again, you, you know, you have, you have thirty-plus employees that are outside of the eight hundred days.
I haven't had any city clerk on here, but.
Well, so is.
Well, she might have came, she might have come in, uh, after, after or before any kind of raise.
Okay, I just, just.
But you're right. No, those are, those are the managerial executive titles within your organization.
Okay. So we're good, Rose?
No, I'm just curious. What are we thinking, guys? No, it wasn't. It really wasn't. I really do want to have this conversation. It's a discussion item for a reason. We can't just ignore our employees and say, and if we're not gonna, if everybody still stands the same, because I just want to be fair. You guys, when I was pushing and, and saying, guys, we have to, you guys said, we gotta handle the budget, see where we land, so on and so forth, right? I don't know how much I can discuss what was discussed at the last meeting in regards to under the CFO and what's under, so, because I was an executive, I'll leave it there. But I just want to remind you guys of that discussion. And I'm just curious. I mean, can we have this discussion? Give, I mean, I know as a department head, especially, and I'm just going to pick one, the last one we have, the PDW director who's doing an amazing job, at least get, let's give them some type of closure. Hey, nothing for twenty-five, guys. I mean, can we have that discussion?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you where I stand on this. I am, uh, you know, I spent most, all of my, this is my first government job as being a city councilman. And I spent most of my life in the private sector. My wife has worked entirely in the private sector. And only in municipal government have I ever seen this idea where you get a raise by default. You just, you, you exist and you have the job, so you get the raise. So this concept is a little strange to me. I'm having trouble wrapping my head around it. Um, I'm in favor in subsequent years of looking at performance-based raises. Uh, but, uh, my, my intent at this time is not to give a raise to any of these people.
So, thank you, thank you, Chris. At least that, that's an answer, but I.
That's just where I'm at.
And, and, and I'm just curious, with that said, and I can, I can appreciate that. You have to earn your, your, your pay, right? And, and raises, that's included. So would you at least be open to us rising all these individuals and having a one-on-one discussion in executive session if they're open to? I don't know if that's legal. So if, if, and I don't even know, since, is it within our purview to, to give some raises and others not? Or do we need to just blanket all of them raises? I'm just curious. I'm just trying to, because I, I have to tell you, I can appreciate that. But there are certain titles here, without naming names, that, I mean, have really stepped up and have earned their pay. And, I mean, I think this is a discussion, you know, more for executives, but is that an option to legal?
We've never done raises with this group on a piecemeal basis.
Is it an option, though? Just because we haven't done it doesn't mean.
We could, we could look into it. Mayor, can I have the floor?
Are we open to having that discussion if we can do that?
No. Performance-based?
Yeah, I want to go get the floor.
Well, that's what I think.
Wait, well, may I remind everyone that a year and a half ago, this council voted unanimously that all confidential employees would have annual reviews. Not, this is before your time, Gary. They weren't done. So what are we talking here?
Okay, right.
You know what? We're in a budget crunch, crunch. I understand you want to push for this, but you weren't on the prevailing side. And now it is ten minutes in, we're not, no.
Uh, well, no, as a matter of fact, this is a discussion item. And at this point, this was back when, and I believe I can bring this up. So go ahead, Tony. What did you have to say?
Okay, one's up. So one, we tried to do some targeted raises on some of these positions that were underpaid. But we put out to do happy port for my council colleague. And now last meeting, for whatever reason, we pulled the last payment from the company that was supposed to do it.
And we canceled it because they did nothing.
Nothing in charge this week.
So you paid thirty-four thousand dollars and didn't do anything.
So, so that's one reason for delay. Two, going off my council colleague, we did put into motion to do, so for me, until we pass a budget, until we do performance reports in the fall, where raises are performance-based, that's where I am. Three, some of these positions here are employees who were just hired.
Mayor.
Wait.
Can I go with these numbers?
Yep. Some of these positions here are employees who were just hired. Some of these positions here are employees that have titles that we're coming to find out that, that is not their title in the civil service computer when they were hired, okay? So to sit here and, 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 and go through some of these, where I am moving forward, they will be performance-based after we get through the budget, um, for me, and on some of them that do need them, that are targeted, I will be in favor for it. But that's where I am.
That's Mr. DiMarzo.
Well, on that, on that note, Tony, it's almost the end of August, and September is next month. So I, I guess, piggybacking off of what you said, Mr. DiMarzo, if, um, we were to ask you to conduct performance reviews for confidential's next month, is that something you're prepared, willing, and able to do?
No, to be perfectly sincere with you, uh, that would not be a timeline you can do. So you, you want to make sure that that is memorialized in some sort of personnel manual, that it, that it, that it means something, that there's guidelines for it. Uh, the managerial and executives, they're, they're talking about, I've seen it done by individual contracts. And so you can do a contract with PDW, and then you can put any of those requirements in that particular contract. Remember, the, the, the individuals that they're, they're talking about are non-union managerial executive positions. So.
It's in our personnel manual that all employees get.
With personnel.
It's in our current personnel.
I understand it, but there's no.
I worked for the city. We used to get them. There's employees watching at home, jumping up and down, saying, what the heck are you people talking about? You understand right now?
Well, I think it's.
I worked for the city.
Fire and fires.
And I'm sure there's people behind me saying the same thing. It's in our personnel manual right now, right now. It's in our personnel manual.
I'm telling you that in your twenty-five-page personnel manual, there is no mechanics in there or language that allows me to do personnel, uh, reviews with any kind of substance. If something was done in the fire department, they have their own code. If something was done in the police department, they have their own code. But there's, there, it, it would be very problematic to start to do performance reviews for a group of individuals that is not memorialized globally in your employee base.
Mayor, through you. Mr. DiMarzo, you did mention, um, at one point, I think, that you were working, uh, with, um, Labor Council and, and our, our legal on a, uh, updated employee manual. Is there a timeline on that?
I would say, uh, within the next maybe ninety days, we'll be able to roll out a comprehensive personnel manual. But that manual will then have to be placed to the employee base, and they will have to sign off on it and review it. So that process is, is probably close to the end of the year.
Wait, they have to sign that they received it. They don't have to sign that they agreed to it.
No, they have to resign that they understand it, correct?
Right, that they, they read it and they understand it. But that's, I wanted to make sure the public understood that they don't have a say in what's written in this manual.
Mayor.
No, they don't. I mean, it's no different in private business. You start a job, you're given the personnel manual. You, you're given it, you have to sign a piece of paper that you read it and understand it. It's no different than.
Well, it depends on what's in the policies, right?
Councilman Pino, yeah.
I just, I just have a question, and I can appreciate you wanting to do it right and do it right the first time, so we have a process. However, and, and the ninety days is your honest, is, is your tool, so, but that's already taking us to the end of the year, right? So is there, what is your comfort level? When I was on the board of that, I know when we did rice notices, that's why I said rice notices is not the, uh, the most awful thing, is to be positive, right? So we were rice notice, individuals, they would come in if, if the board wanted to speak with them, and then they would, you know, step out. And then the superintendent at that time would give us his view, equivalent to the superintendent, give us the feedback, right? And then us as commissioners would then make a decision as a whole. Is that something? Because now you've been on, on the job now, you know.
A hundred days.
A hundred days, right? So now I'd like to think you've at least had some type of experience, and especially you weren't given the easiest onboarding. So, um, could you, would you be comfortable with that?
I would do it, I personally would do it as either an MOU or employment contract with each one of those individuals. And then you could put whatever language that you would want to put into that contract, whether it's performance-based, and if you missed three or four days, and if, 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 and you, you can build your employment contract with these particular individuals. These are speci, these are specific individuals outside of the unions, and they're your managerial.
So, so then you're saying, instead of doing, include them in the handbook, is what I'm understanding, do individual contracts for each of them that include that they'll have a performance-based evaluation?
That's what you would like, but they would all be beholden to the hundred and fifty-some-odd-page manual that we are creating.
But again, it's already in our personnel manual that all employees will receive an annual performance review. What, what, what comprehension in there is not computing with us?
I don't understand. There, there's no, that, that, that you, that it is not defining, definitive, relative to any action if they're deficient. What happens if they're deficient? Is there, what's the, what's the, what's the legal, what's the, uh, the ramification? What's the, what's the, what's the discipline relative to if it's not? Is it progressive discipline? Is it immediate termination? What, what is the discipline? I go to you and I say, you're not doing your job. You get, you get a letter of reprimand, but I'm terminating you. It's, it's just, there's no clear policy, so.
Can we, and, and so I, I like to, I, what I'm hearing is that some of my colleagues are at least open to, to having a conversation. Can we continue this? Because in the spirit of moving on, and it's almost seven-thirty, if legal can give us some maybe direction in rethinking this, and what would be the most efficient, effective way to get this addressed, if that's the desire of council?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So if it's question six, is a construction cone of course.
Mayor.
I have it on. It's seven thirty.
Okay, sorry. So, um, discussion six.
Whereas the municipal council deems it essential in the furthering to the public interest to discuss in closed session as expressly permitted by NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, the following subjects be discussed as per the agenda and the resolution. A, personnel matters will be discussed. B, contracts and agreements will be discussed. C, litigation matters will be discussed. Now therefore, it be resolved that the public shall be exused
No, no, she's playing phone to us.
and excluded from this portion of the council's meeting to be held on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at which time said subjects shall be discussed.
You're on the list.
And be it further resolved that the discussion held in such closed session can be disclosed to the public on or about time. The matter is concluded.
What's that?
Motion to go into closed.
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by the annual and also regularly scheduled meetings of municipal council for the year twenty-twenty-four, which was published as a legal advertisement in the Herald News and the Record on January fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Further notice that this meeting was given on Friday prior to the meeting by posting said notice on the bulletin board at City Hall and on the City of Clifton's website, which notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken and that matters to come before the municipal council. Roll call, please.
Councilman DiMarzo.
Present.
Councilman Gibson is absent. Councilman Koloje.
Present.
Councilman Latona.
Here.
Councilwoman Pino.
Here.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Here.
Mayor Grabowski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. This evening's invocation will be given by Father Sokolovski, St. John Canty Parish, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Almighty and living God, the challenges of summer are slowly fading, and we're approaching the new season, which is, it's a fall time. Families of our city are returning from vacation. Children will soon be returning to school. Newer problems of fall and winter soon create newer challenges. It is with this mind that we pray to you to give our city leaders the courage and wisdom to work in unison to face these problems for a betterment of our citizens here in Clifton. For this God, we offer our prayers. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, honored as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Saint Francis Vasisi, pray for us.
Thank the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Sokolovski. We appreciate that. Thank you. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the public, Clifton Public Housing Agency of twenty-twenty-six Annual Plan. Does anyone wish to be heard? Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Uh, tonight, we have a presentation, I guess, presenting us. Ray Lil and, uh, John Hughes, if you want to come up and. You can use any mic if you like. Do it from the sto, yeah, do it from the podium. Be better.
On behalf of the Tank Pull Committee, the Knights of Columbus and Catholic Charities, we would like to thank the city of Clifton for all they've done for us for fifteen years. We've gone over two million dollars and given to the veterans. So thank you so much. I brought a little picture here of the nuns pulling the tank from, uh, Saint, uh, Saint Mary's and, and, uh, North Hailid. This is the nuns and the bishop cheering them on. So this went to two million people. Two million people got to know about the tank pull this year. God bless yous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Stand up.
Ready? Say tank pull. Very nice, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Kathleen, can we have the plural of the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor.
Second.
Councilman DiMarzo.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Gibson's absent. Councilman Koloje.
Yes to the minutes.
Councilman Latona.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
If we're voting as a group, since I said I'm voting on that, no, I'm voting no to the entire group.
And Mayor Grabowski.
Yes. Communications.
Okay, Mayor, we have various communications from the city managers listed on the agenda. Uh, we have committee minutes on the agenda, the meeting minutes of the Clifton Advisory Committee for Individuals with Disabilities for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. We have the meeting minutes of the Clifton Advisory Beautification Committee on August fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Mayor, that concludes all communications and brings us to the second reading of the ordinances. We have ordinance eight thousand thirteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement chapter four thirty-nine of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly section four thirty-nine dash thirty-seven thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets. This deletes one handicap space.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Uh, Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move public portion be closed, and the ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman DiMarzo.
Yes.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Ordinance eight thousand fourteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement chapter four thirty-nine of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly section four thirty-nine dash thirty-eight thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residences. Adds five restricted handicap spaces.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move to, uh, close public portion, and ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman DiMarzo.
Yes.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Ordinance eight thousand fifteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement chapter four thirty-nine of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly section four thirty-nine dash thirty-eight thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residences, deletes three restricted handicap spaces.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move to close public portion, and ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8016-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-38 thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residences, amends nine handicap parking placard numbers.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move the public portion be closed, and ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8017-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 296 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Landscapers.
Motion to table.
Second to table, since Councilman Gibson isn't here, and I know he wanted to weigh in on this.
I have a roll call on the table.
Councilman Demato?
Yes to table.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes to table.
Councilman Latona?
I will be open-minded to revisit this. Yes to table.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes to table.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor, should you be voting on that?
Yeah, shouldn't have a vote. No vote. Ordinance 8018-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 375 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Sewer Connection Fee, increases the connection fee.
Move it, in second.
Public hearing, no?
Oh, yeah. Oh, public hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Ray, you need to do the public hearing. We're on the second reading of...
Connection Fee Ordinance.
I'm sorry. Public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move a public portion be closed, and ordinance adopted on final affirmative.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion.
So, we have before us this evening an ordinance amend, revise, and it's a revised version. Can someone explain the revised version to us, please?
Sure. So, the original ordinance that was introduced increased the fee based on the number of bedrooms alone. The revised ordinance that you have on tonight also adds an additional fee based on square footage of the home, and the rationale being if you have a very large home, say you have a 2,500-square-foot home with three bedrooms and a 6,000-square-foot home with three bedrooms, that you anticipate more people coming through the home because it's larger and therefore higher usage. So that was the rationale behind the revision.
So then, just to be clear, ultimately, I own a 2,000-square-foot house, and I decide that I'm going to put on a 1,000-square-foot addition. The calculation is done on 3,000 square feet or on the 1,000 square feet?
It would be the addition. So you would, your fee would be based on the number of bedrooms you've added, if any, and the extra 1,000 square feet.
And it's still tied to bedrooms?
Yes. If you added a bedroom, there'd be a connection fee for the bedroom and then the 1,000 total square feet.
So if I'm just adding a bathroom?
If you were just adding a bathroom, no bedroom, then there'd be a fee for the square footage of the bathroom, assuming it was an addition, not a renovation of an existing space. But if you added on a bathroom to your home, there'd be a fee just for the square footage of the bathroom.
So one of the things that I remember on Cambridge Crossing, which the city council, you know, had put forth a very specific limit of the number of bedrooms that could go into that place, and so they all got built with a third-story loft and no door to that loft. And shortly after people started occupying them, they became three-bedroom buildings, right? So in theory, you're saying to me that if I am under this new ordinance, putting in an addition, which I now call a den, and I'm putting in a bathroom, I'm just getting hit for the bathroom portion of it, and after all the inspections are done, and then come back and put a door on my den, and I now have a bedroom?
So the addition, you'd pay the fee based on the square footage of the addition, but if it's approved as something other than a bedroom, then you would not pay the connection fee for the bedroom. If it turns into a bedroom at some point in time, and the city becomes aware of it, they can add the fee at that time, but you could, there's no way for us to know who's sleeping in the room.
No, there isn't, and I think that's part of my issue with the formula, and listen, I appreciate the hard work that's been put into this, but the ability to game the system is pretty ripe here, and the other issue that I have with this is that we're actually going to discourage people from investing in their homes, because they're now going to have to pay extra money to put on a bathroom or to put on a bedroom because they got another kid on the way, and there's going to be all these extra fees that are now involved, which ultimately, when they do all that work, is going to increase the value of their home, and they're going to pay us more property taxes anyway. So I think this is almost going to encourage people to move out of Clifton as opposed to keep their roots here.
Mayor, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the administration. I came in during the week to work on this. Just so everyone knows, we were literally charging like a quarter per gallon divided by whatever for residents. That number's going to $7.25. So this is going to greatly increase the fees into the sewer infrastructure system on more of the developers than the residents. Someone adding, to go off of Joe's thing last week and another baby sow, yes, if someone's doing a small addition, are they going to pay $500 or $600 more to add to the sewer fee? Yes, but it's more geared towards, I'm talking about, there's going to be, in future development, hundreds of thousands to millions put into the system, because under the new rules, take a development of 300 units at Black Prince, under the old rules, they might have paid $36,000, under the old rules, to put 300 bathrooms, sinks, washers, toilets, everything in the system. With the new rules, it's going to be about $2,000 a unit and about half a million dollars. So we're going to actually start charging the developers, who a lot of times caused the sewer backups, and then who paid to fix it? The residents. We put in, asked the people to purchase the place, right? Asked those residents there after we put in the Ave, and then they didn't pay the extra fees, and then when everything failed, we, the taxpayers, spent millions. So to my colleague, Joe, this is long overdue. It is not going to affect a resident adding one bathroom to their house. If everyone looks at all these McMansions people, they're spending a half a million to a million dollars to build these McMansions all over the city. Does anyone think that baseball player that bought that house across from school, too, isn't going to not build that monstrosity because the city of Clifton added a $2,500 sewer fee connection? He spent $800,000 into the house to expand it, but man, that $250,000, it's going to be a deal breaker for him. Not going to happen. We're actually going to start fixing this, so...
Mayor? Tony, you're absolutely right. Do you think that McMansion there, Grove Street, whatever, Rosemar, you spent a million and a half for a house to tear it down? Our building permits are based on the cost of the addition. Do you think this is going to stop it? Let's get real here. We talk about bringing in extra revenue, but as soon as we want to do something, oh, you're going to stop this. This isn't reinventing the wheel. When it comes before a board, there's a flow chart that each specific use has a number of gallons that goes into our system. This is logical. You can't have it both ways. You can't sit up here and say, we need more revenue, and then every single time, we want to increase the revenue. Oh, you can't do this. Well, guess what? Can we call the question?
No, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Because I agree with both the councilwoman and the councilman 100%. I think that an extra $2,500 fee to the people who want to overdevelop our community, that's peanuts. They're not really going to care about that. My concern is the unintended consequence of hitting the little guy who had to scrape money together in order to put an addition on because he wants to stay in Clifton, and that's my objection to the way this is...
And that's why the engineering department, as we had a sit-down meeting with the city attorney and city manager, recommended going this route, instead of the $2,500 fee that I was looking to go. So someone doing a small addition isn't going to pay that same amount of money. It's going to go by distance, square footage-based. So someone adding a small room isn't going to pay as much. We're just raising the amount per gallons.
And in this day and age with cost of building, do you really think, sitting up here, that somebody's going to take their little piggy bank from their kid with the pennies to scrape up money to do an addition? Come on. Let's stop with the quote-unquote grandstanding that people up here accuse other people. The little guy, little guy, come on, we're doing additions.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify. So then, the fee is no, I'm sorry, councilwoman, but I do want to know what we're voting on here, because I initially voted in favor of...
With all due respect, you can do what me and my colleagues do. You can come in the City Hall, you can call the city administration, you can read your pack.
This was handed to me this evening. This was in front of my chair. I would have read it earlier had it been supplied to me earlier. But that being said, the $2,500 fee is now no longer being charged. That's correct? And this is what's replacing that $2,500 fee?
The fee used to be a couple hundred dollars. There was no $2,500 fee. We were charging a nickel per gallon, which on a resident was like $160 a unit. There was no $2,500 fee. That's just what we're adopting, because that's what other towns are using as their number to do a sewer connection fee. We were charging 160, Joe. 25 cents per gallon divided by whatever it is, came out to be $160 per unit. So that's all, someone turned one family house into six units? That's all they were paying.
I can appreciate that, but that wasn't the question that I asked, and I directed it towards Legal, and I'm sorry that I didn't clarify that, because we introduced at $2,500. That was the first reading two weeks ago, correct?
So we, the fee is based on a formula, and the way the formula works for a typical home, which we call a three-bedroom home as typical, the formula would currently comes out to somewhere between like $300 and $400. The way the formula would come out under the increase, it would be about 2,500, plus the square footage fee of the new space.
So that's what we're voting on tonight?
Yes.
A $2,500 fee?
Approximately 2,500 for a new three-family home, a three-bedroom home connecting to the system, and then an additional fee based on the square footage of that new home.
We call the question.
Okay, second on that? Second.
No, it was closed.
A motion to reopen the public hearing, Mayor?
Second.
Yes, get up.
Here's what I don't understand, is you're putting an addition on your house, naturally you're going to put either an Atta Level or a Dormer or something like that. You're going to put your bathroom, your new bathroom, over your existing bathroom. So they're going to hook in to that sewer line. They're not coming out to the street and hooking into a sewer line. I don't think there should be any fee. I don't think there should be any fee for that, because you're not adding any more water. You're not adding any more anything. The only thing you're adding is an extra sink and a toilet bowl, and you're making it a little bit easier for somebody to take a leak instead of going all the way downstairs. That's what you're doing. You're still pissing and pooping the same. So I don't understand why there's a fee for this at all. I could see if you're building a new house, and you got to dig a trench, and you got to come into the street, and you got to cut into the sewer. That's a sewer hookup, not putting a bathroom over your other bathroom and just tying into the vent pipe. That's my...
Heard, I moved it to public hearing, be closed again.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to call the question, and a second, so I'll have a roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Here's the secret of politics that people who want to be reelected won't ever tell you. There's never a perfect solution. Every decision we make up here helps some people, is detrimental to others. It's our job to weigh that and try to help more people than we hurt. With that said, my vote is yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Can you clarify, are we voting on calling the question, or are we voting on the ordinance?
We're voting on the ordinance.
Yeah, I already asked it through any objections.
So no, for the very reasons that the public just stated, we're going to discourage people from, we're going to hurt the little guy passing this, and I understand that you think that there's hundreds of thousands of dollars. To create hundreds of thousands of dollars, we would need to have significant overdevelopment in this town, and there's seven of us on this day that are anti-overdevelopment. So I'm going to vote no.
Councilman Latona?
This isn't going to fare out the system. It's not going to hurt someone just adding a small bathroom. That fee is not the same. It's someone turning a house to a McMansion, or one family house to six units, or a Black Prince to 300 units. That's what this is about, to fund that system, so yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
No.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes, for the reasons I stated.
Mayor Grabowski?
No. It may hurt the small guy.
Three yes, three no, motion failed.
So for Black Prince, ladies and gentlemen, you'll get $36,000 into the sewer infrastructure instead of a half a million from the rich developer. That's what we're talking about here, ladies and gentlemen.
And when your sewer fee goes...
$36,000 instead of three, half a million.
Okay, we're going to, excuse me.
One developer.
When your sewer fee goes...
Councilwoman, you did not ask for the floor, so please do not speak unless you ask for the floor. Thank you. Otherwise, they can't write fast enough what everyone's saying at one time. First ordinance readings.
We have ordinance 8019-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-10 thereof entitled Stopping or Standing Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets, adds no stopping or standing zone on Valley Road.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Demato?
Yeah.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
We have ordinance 8020-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 349 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Permit Parking on Residential Streets and Municipal Lots, Article 1 entitled Residential Streets, more particularly Section 349-2 thereof entitled Restricted Streets, Harrison Place.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8021-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 189 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Canvassing and Soliciting, more particularly Section 189-3 entitled Fees.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Motion to raise fees, wow, yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes, maybe we should say what we're doing, like 20 to 25, not big numbers, but of course.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8022-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 223 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Fees, more particularly Section 223-30 entitled Accident Reports, amends the fee for printed reports.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Is it to raise fees? Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes, to raise fees.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8,023-25, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 347 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Parking of Truck Tractors, Trailers, and Buses, more particularly Section 347-2 thereof entitled Parking Prohibited Certain Hours permitted Permit for Recreational Vehicle, amends the fee for recreational vehicle permit.
Move it.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 223 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Fees, more particularly Section 223-4 entitled Letters of Good Conduct, amends the fee for background checks.
Move it.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8,025-25, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 223 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Fees, more particularly Section 223-10 entitled Driveway Striping, amends fee for the striping of driveways.
Is that striping or stripping?
I believe it's striping.
So who stripes a driveway?
Driveway...
No, I'm sorry, I'll move it.
Stripping?
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah, striping.
And administration, clarify what this particular fee is being charged for?
Legal? I don't know why.
I'm assuming if someone wants to redo their driveway, they've got to pay a fee to rip up their old driveway.
No, it's... Isn't the driveway striping at the edge so people don't park? That's what it is.
It's when you put...
Fifteen.
Outside your driveway.
Outside your driveway, so people know not to park past the line. Yeah, yeah.
Does somebody want to read what the ordinance is? I don't know what the question was.
No, this was just an increase in the fee that we charge.
Right.
For the striping.
And it's on the street. It's not in the person's driveway.
Right, on the street.
Yeah. So redoing a driveway doesn't have anything to do with this.
Right, so it's not really driveway striping, it's road striping for aprons.
Well, it's... We've always called it whatever.
No, I know, we've always called it.
It's ridiculous.
Okay, could I have a first and a second, so I just need a roll call.
We add the first and second.
Yes.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8,026-25, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 349 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Permit Parking on Residential Streets and Municipal Lots, more particularly Sections 349-7 thereof entitled Application for Permit Fee Terms of Permit, amends temporary permit parking fee.
Move it.
Move it, second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
No.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8,026-25, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 349 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Permit Parking on Residential Streets and Municipal Lots, more particularly Sections 349-7 thereof entitled Application for Permit Fee Terms of Permit, amends temporary permit parking fee.
Move it.
Move it, second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
No.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
An ordinance... Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 8,027-25, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 133 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Alarm Devices, more particularly Section 133-6 entitled Registration Fees, Penalties for Failure to Register, revises the minimum fine.
Move it.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Ordinance 8,028-25, an ordinance to amend, revise and supplement Chapter 215 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Entertainment at Section 215-7 entitled Application for License and Section 215-11 entitled Violations and Penalties, adds requirement that certain renewal applications must provide notice to property owners within 200 feet of establishment and appear in person before the municipal council, and increases potential penalty for a violation of this chapter.
Move it.
Second.
Question?
Question.
What is the increase for the public's identification? What would the increase be for the potential penalty?
Hundred and fifty, wasn't it? Wasn't it 150? We agreed in the work session.
This is for the entertainment?
Oh, okay, yeah, the 150 was for the grass.
Roll call.
Eight oh eight.
I would still prefer an answer on what the potential penalty would be, Mayor.
One second. Andy, do you know which... The entertainment license?
It's actually not in the... The resolution, the ordinance is not in the packet.
Sorry.
The title is here, but the ordinance itself is not in the packet. It skips right to the bill list. I don't know why. So we're going to have to have legal look at it because it's not here.
Yeah, and I'll check on the... What it currently is.
So Mayor, I won't hold this up because it's going to require a second reading anyway, but I am, before we make this a permanent thing, would like to know what the increase for the potential penalty would be.
Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes, to introduce.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor, the second reading will be September 2nd for those, and this concludes the ordinances for this evening.
These ordinances will be published in accordance with the law. Next portion is hearing to the public. Public comments portion, you will now proceed. Please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Speaking is permitted for five minutes only. Please refrain from emotional responses either in favor or against the speaker in order to maintain decorum. If anyone wishes to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
Tiffany Miles, 14 Luddington Avenue in Clifton. I'm here to make a complaint about 1281 Main Street in Clifton. It is a restaurant that used to be Bohemian Bistro that is now El Pilon, P-I-L-O-N. They have an outdoor café, and to my understanding, they do not have an entertainment license. They do not have a café license. They have carved out the whole back of the building and put up planters and seats and speakers, and on Sunday they decided to have a disco, which all the residents heard. And I'm here to make a formal complaint about that, and I want to make sure that they apply for a license or they're fined for not having a license. We did call the police twice. Our neighbors have called the police twice, and they have come out. So 1281 Main Street. Second, downtown Clifton is a special improvement district, to my knowledge. It used to be clean. There used to be no weeds in between the bricks. There used to be a person that manned that downtown Clifton bid office. There used to be meetings held with the mayor, the old mayor. There was a board, there were trustees, there were people who swept the streets, the garbage was kept clean. It is not the same. It hasn't been the same in the last seven years. I don't know if there is still someone in charge of downtown Clifton, if they're being paid. I know there was a salary being paid. If they're being paid a salary, I don't think they're doing their job. Also, I know that there's a special assessment for taxes to the owners on Main Avenue, and being that there's nothing being done, there should be an excess of money to make sure it's clean. It's not clean. In front of the PNC building is dirty. There's always garbage, it's not well-kept, and, you know, I've been a resident for 27 years. I really only come when I have something to say to the council, but I feel like I will be here more often because I don't think I like everything that's happening in this city, and I have voted for some of you here, and I don't think you all have my best interest for me. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiana Wortman. I live on Van Orden Place. You might remember me coming here for cottage food operator permits a few months ago. I would like to say that I've gotten my cottage food operator permit, which means I can now legally sell baked goods baked from home. I'm the owner of Carmella's Sweets, a home bakery. My goal is to grow my business in Clifton by selling at markets and carnivals, hopefully. And I hope to not only grow my business in Clifton, but also make new connections and meet my community, because I am a new resident of Clifton. I only moved here about a year or two ago. So I just wanted to come here and promote and say hello to the council once again and say thank you for all that you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Gerard Scorsiello, Persian Road. This council has come close to adopting a 10-point tax increase. It might be six points, it might be 12 points, but there's going to be a tax increase. It's not entirely your fault, and there's been a lot of finger pointing, but the problem doesn't end at this budget. There will be more debate and drama next year this time, and the following year, and the year after that. Why is that, and what could be done about it? I'm here to give you some observations and insight. There's been a movement happening right now, and it's occurring at breakneck speed. Technological advances, particularly in artificial intelligence and its impact on changing the world, AI has become the most disruptive technology we have ever seen. Older companies and dated methods of doing things are being disrupted. AI can displace employees quickly. AI can generate software that can be created to create new employees, employees that can work 24/7. It can create models that can win math competitions. It almost seems unfair what this technology can do. I'd like to share some data points. In 2017, Facebook went on a hiring spree. It took four years to go from 25,000 employees to 86. With slightly more than 86,000 employees, Facebook generated about $115 billion of revenue. Really pretty incredible, a tremendous financial success. Three years later, Facebook generated a little bit under $200 billion with 20% less employees. It's masterful what they can do with far less employees. This is a trend, not just for Facebook, but it's occurring in finance, it's occurring in retail, self-checkout at Target, Costco, there's even a McDonald's in Florida with not one employee, machines are making french fries, flipping burgers. This is not an anomaly, it's a trend of doing more with less. Why do I bring this up, and why is it important? Because we are in the midst of a technological revolution that is changing the world very rapidly. We are entering into a digital economy where there will be robotaxis, physical jobs could be displaced in another 10 years, periods of companies doing significantly more with significantly less. It could impact fire departments, police departments, DPW, snow plowing, recycling, who knows? We really don't know what disruption is coming, but we know it's on its way. We need a council that can address disruption. We need a council that can recognize we're in an unprecedented time. We need a council that is willing and able to make decisions on a forward-looking basis. We need a council that can recognize there are risks, and the risks are different than the traditional risks that you faced. Now, let's tie this into Clifton. Clifton has three data centers. The data centers are a crucial component to the digital economy. Collectively, these data centers, in my research, it showed generate about $4 million in taxes. Now, 50% of that goes to the school system, the rest goes to the city and the county. Data centers don't put kids in school, data centers don't use many services, they hardly use any sewer, cops, firemen, et cetera, yet they're big contributors. The state of Virginia is the epicenter for data centers, but in the Northeast, we're an ideal location because of our close proximity to New York. When I was on the zoning board, we approved a data center. There was a fair amount of objection, there was resistance from politicians, and there was a lot of people that just didn't like it. That's not being... Let's not be against everything, but let's be for something. This is not a pessimistic view, it's quite the opposite. It's very optimistic, if you address it properly. Let's look at the US economy. S&amp;P, the market as measured by the S&amp;P and the NASDAQ, at all-time highs. Around the world, German markets, all-time highs. Taiwan market, all-time high, Japan, all-time high. Our neighbors, if you measure the Canadian market by the S&amp;P equivalent, all-time high. Things are going fairly well. However, we can't benefit from what we can't see. I'm watching these meetings for months, and I have not heard one time talk about planning for the future, talking about taking advantage of the new digital economy. It brings me back to my time as a kid at Disney World. There was a ride called the Carousel of Progress, where the world is innovating so rapidly, decades are developing in years. We need to address what's occurring. We need to look at new innovations, how shareholders, stakeholders, taxpayers will be treated in the years to come. Hopefully, the council and the new city manager can recognize these changes for the better and act accordingly. If any of you would like to discuss this or collaborate, well, I think all of you know how to find me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Evers, 64 Stevens Place. Been in Clifton for eight years. I came to the council meeting last time, this is my second one, and I appreciate the meetings and the debates between everyone, the council members on the important topics. However, what I'm about to say, I think, compared to line striping and landscaper fees and sewer hookups, is a lot more important than that, and that is the water quality we have, the Passaic Valley Water Commission. I have been inundated with pictures on my phone of discolored water, brown water. My neighbors on Stevens Road, social media posts that I see, it's unbelievable. This is going on for a month now, and it's happened two or three times this year. It happened last year. I must have 50 pictures on my phone of my slop sink downstairs, brown water. It affects the hot water heater. I've got a pool. Every morning, we're afraid, when I begin in the morning to take a shower, I have to run the water for an hour, okay? I had to buy a water filter for the house, have someone install a water filter. Within two days, that filter was totally brown. It's supposed to last three to six months. One of my friends here, Ray, had another friend here two weeks ago, showed me a picture of a water filter he had for like a year or so, and it was crystal clear. Mine is completely brown after three days being installed. This is ridiculous. This is a basic part of life, water. I don't drink the water, but you wash your fruit, you wash your hands, you brush your teeth, it goes in your hot water heater, that sediment's on the bottom. Now, I don't know if anyone has been on the council for the Passaic Valley Water Commission. Every town that that commission serves is supposed to have one representative, but if any of you are, I can't believe this hasn't been addressed yet. This is ridiculous, and it's not just a certain area. I've called them a million times, sent emails, nothing gets replied, nothing gets returned. I'm done going to them. I've got the Department of Environmental Protection, the director's phone number and email, I'm gonna go to her, I'm gonna go to our councilman, I forget her name, and I'm gonna complain here. This has to stop. So, this has, if this has been addressed before, I apologize for being redundant, this is my second meeting, but if any of you live in Clifton, I'm sure you've seen this at least once or twice, we get it all the time, and I've talked to so many people that have it, and they don't know what else to do. That's all I have to say, but I hope something gets done with this. I'm gonna come to the next meeting, and I'd like to see you guys talk about this, rather than driveway striping and sewer fee hookups. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Creo. I live on Rollins Avenue. I've lived in Clifton for 55 years. I've heard some discussions about revamping Allwood Road, which I think isn't gonna happen right away, but I'd like to bring your attention to a project that was done on Route 46 and is still not complete. There are three sets of traffic lights on Route 46, as most of you know. New traffic lights were installed, and now they're all covered with plastic bags, so they're not operating. But more than that, nothing has been done about alerting drivers to the fact that there are so many pedestrians that cross Route 46. As a reminder, there are two schools there. There's a grammar school, there is a middle school. Kids jump back and forth across the highway constantly, but they don't look because they're on their phones. Additionally, you have two sets of apartment buildings. Mothers cross with babies, seniors cross to shop, and yet, you have, I can't even imagine how many more cars come down Route 46 than there used to be. The speed limit on Route 46 going east is supposed to be 50 miles an hour. That never happens. Cars go down that highway 60 miles an hour, 65 miles an hour, all feeding into those two lanes. And in addition to that, you have the traffic off of Broad Street, you have the traffic off of the Parkway. So, before someone is seriously injured or someone is killed, the signs for pedestrians notifying the drivers have to be changed. They're this big, you don't even notice them. Other towns have fluorescent signs, that fluorescent green, that tell people, people will be crossing. There's a pole that goes across Route 46 before Paulson Avenue that has not been working for years. It used to tell drivers the signal of the traffic light ahead, green or red. No indication, so you have. I wish all of you would go there and notice the amount of traffic turning this way, turning this way, turning this way. I wouldn't cross the highway anymore. It's really dangerous. So, please, I don't know whether it was the county, whether it was the state, I don't have any idea whose project it was, but please, before someone is seriously injured, the signs have to be changed for pedestrian crossing. Thank you.
Gary Perino, Clifton. You know what? I don't know where to start tonight, I have so many things, but anyways. My friend Bart, you may not always agree with him, but you know what? He said something pretty profound last meeting. 92,000 people in Clifton, you ever wonder why a half a dozen people come up to speak? I kind of have an idea, because things don't get done. It falls into the black hole, as Tony calls it, as Mary says, it's La La Land, Bizarra Land. Things don't get done. To the three of you up there, and you know who you are, that are not politically motivated, if you're a Seinfeld fan, serenity now, serenity now. But anyways, last meeting, I had asked a question, a very simple question. I said, was Mr. Valano, did he go through a statewide vetted? Did he go by a national vetted? Or was he appointed by the council? I only got one quick response, and it said, oh, I agree with Gary that Clifton deserves the best, that it should be a national vetting. Well, I'm still waiting for my answer, and I would like the answer, and if it was that he was appointed by the council, I would like to know why this gentleman over here is not given the same option. Good for one, good for all. I don't know if Chris was joking last time, but my favorite Airbnbs, and if we were looking for some kind of fee for these people, whether it's 25 or $50 a night, but I see some problems if that's one of our revenue sources, and if it's being considered, I'd like to throw this into the mix. We can't monitor that now. When we have an ordinance onboard, how are we gonna monitor this fee? Are we going to have special insurance, like these guys that do the DoorDash and the Ubers? Or are we just gonna let people just invite other people into their homes? What about pools? Or are we gonna have pool parties there? Is it gonna be Animal House? Is it gonna be a party zone? These are all things to be considered. It's a great idea to charge these people, but we have ordinances on the books right now. Sidewalks, parking, signs, obstructions in the right of way. We have, Mosquito Joe has his sign outside over here. I called up, and I understand there were 16 of Mosquito Joe's signs taken up the other day. Why isn't Mosquito Joe swatted with a $50 fine for each one? Why are these signs still out there? This is the problem with this city. Then I hear the little guy. Well, guess what, folks? I'm a little guy. My wife is gonna be embarrassed by saying, I was the sole support of six people, four small children, a wife that stayed home, and I was an executive with a bank for 23 years, and guess what? There were two years that things, there were problems in the economy. I didn't get a raise, I didn't get a bonus. You folks have to understand, when I hear Councilman DeBottle, right on target, right on target, there's a difference between public and private. And you know what? Unfortunately, the little guy gets swatted, like Mosquito Joe should be. And you know what? It's unfortunate, so I was given the option. Don't take a raise, don't take a bonus, or find another job. Our city manager kind of said it the best, and I like the guy, and I think he's great for the city. And he said, we're our worst enemy. I'm paraphrasing him, but you know what? The man is absolutely, positively right. We are our worst enemy. If you can't vote on increasing fees, it's an embarrassment. Whether you folks like it or not, it is an embarrassment. And Mayor, with all due respect, you gotta take control of this place, quickly. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Clifton residents. I am Nick Velicky. I live on Woodlawn Avenue in Clifton. I had originally come here with the intent of introducing myself as the new president of the Clifton Democratic Club. However, sitting here, I can see that there's so much more to be said. We live in a city that has so much potential. There's a young lady here that because of your action was able to start a home business, a home baking business. To that, I applaud you. That's a good thing you did. You've got Power of One represented here, you've got St. Peter's Haven Pantry represented here. You guys have been handed a city that is a diamond in the rough. Granted, I'm here on behalf of the Clifton Democratic Club. Clifton is a bipartisan, or nonpartisan, however you care to say it, form of government. So, we're not looking at a Republican way or a Democratic way, as Bill Pascrell used to say, of changing a light bulb, of fixing a pothole. It really comes down to the fact that you've got to work together, you've got to pull together. Now, the audience at home did not see a very, very simple example of what happened here tonight to show, sorry, guys, but your dysfunctionality. Every meeting, people line up to the left. People who are not familiar with this procedure lined up in the center. Matter of fact, a comment was made. What's the center line for? Popcorn or to speak? Yet, not one of you, you are our leaders, and not one of you had the gumption, the guts, whatever you want to call it, to say, could you please form one line? I've been in a shopping mall, at a department store, and an 18-year-old will stand there and say, excuse me, please make one line. You guys can't even manage the line at your meeting. How can we put our faith in you to manage our city and to manage the budget? The forensic budget is in. I haven't had a chance to read it. I can't wait to read it. I'm sure it's gonna be very telling. But one thing I do know is each and every one of you up there, and I say this from my years of experience, you guys, if you care, are fighting for your political lives. You've got to make sure you sharpen your game, you've got to make sure you focus, and you got to make sure that you move this city ahead and have a plan to move this city ahead, or come November 2026, there are gonna be quite a few new candidates who will very gladly take your seat and exercise a plan that'll be good for Clifton. Thank you very much for your time.
People talk about revenue generating revenue and taxes and all of that. Whatever happened to the houses of worship up on the Wazeline Road, all the people that are getting away without paying taxes? Whatever happened to that? We discussed that a couple of years ago, but nothing ever came about it. And whatever happened to the people that never put sidewalks in on Allwood Place? I was under the assumption that if they don't put the sidewalks in, they still don't have a CO on that property. So, alls they're doing is extending their construction permit, which is a hell of a lot cheaper than paying taxes once they get a CO. So, why isn't anything being done with this? This is years now we talked about this, years ago. Can anybody explain that to me? Because I don't understand why. I put complaints in two years ago about sidewalks. You got an ordinance for sidewalks, they gotta be fixed. I got nothing. I got nothing from nobody. Nobody ever looked at them or anything. They're still there, and I'm still tripping over them. You talk about cutting grass. Every two weeks, I gotta make the same phone call for the same guy, because nobody's living in the house, and they let the grass overgrow. And then the city's got, then it takes two more weeks for the city to come in and cut it. In the meantime, I got mice, and I got all kinds of things running around, because I live, you know how Delaware is, you dump everything in there anyway, and it all comes up from Costco's, from the swamp. You people really, I asked Gary, okay? Gary was the only guy, new guy, the only guy that met me at Duney Park. And you know the first thing he said when he got out? Looks like a nuclear bomb went off here. You people spend millions, millions of dollars on pickleball courts and other parks, you've yet, I've been in Delaware for 66 years, and the only thing I've ever seen done in that park was you put new equipment in about 30 years ago, and you put some railroad ties in that are rotted out now. Nothing has ever been done to that park, nothing. Even my granddaughter was down there today. She says all the weeds are growing up through the macadam and everything, and through the woodchips. I would love to get at least, at least one of you to have the guts to come down there and meet with me, but it seems nobody's got the balls to do it, because they don't want to see it and they don't want to hear it, because they know I'm right. You know I'm right. You know I'm right, okay? And Gary knows I'm right, but yet, you do nothing about it. My taxes, I pay my taxes every year, I get nothing, okay? I had a trailer parked in my driveway. First thing they did, they had made me pay $25 to keep my trailer in my driveway. I've been complaining about sidewalks for two years. Nobody's done nothing about it. Why? Why am I being discriminated against and other people get away with things? Is it because I'm Bart Servo, and I come down here and run my mouth off? Is that the reason? Because it sucks if it is, okay? And I'm telling you right now, as of right now, I was never into this at all. This all started with me for a dog park. That's how this all started for me, and I got screwed on that deal too. But I'm telling you right now, I will vote this year, if I'm still in town, but I'm not voting for none of yous, because yous all stink. You don't listen to anybody. People come up to this podium, and they tell you their problems, they tell you what they want fixed, and yous all shake your heads, and it never, it just blows right through one ear and out the other. Nothing gets done. Nothing get, you waste so much time, you waste so much of our time in that room with your piggly things, that we have nothing to say about anyway. It's all up to you. You guys run the city. You make the votes, you tell him what to do. He doesn't tell you what he wants to do, he can only make suggestions to you. But you are the boss of the city, and let me tell you something, if you work for me, I'd fire all your asses.
Donna Popovich, Dalewood Road, Mayor of Donaville. First off, I'm so sorry I missed the last meeting. I know that you were all sad that I didn't get a chance to talk, but I was on vacay, and to let you know, I was thinking about all of you. I bought a T-shirt, and I'm gonna give it to Gary, because I just don't think he has enough Wildwood T-shirts. So, we will pass this over to you.
I could use a Clifton one. I already have Wildwood ones.
I don't think we have Clifton ones, Gary. Okay? I just want to come up and do a few, first off, a few things. First of all, the Clifton pantries, we have not asked everyone for food all summer. We have been living off of our pantries that we had, storage in my garage, I might add. But my garage, the shelves are now getting bare. We're finally getting to the point where we need to start collecting food again, so I'm gonna encourage everyone, you know, we have a website, or should say, an Amazon wishlist. You could always drop food in the pantry. If you don't want to do that, you could bring it to my house on my 57 Dalewood Road. But, and we're gonna start our Feed Clifton this fall. Our Feed Clifton program is going to involve collection sites, and I'm going to be asking the council if we could please put a box in the front just to collect food. This was an excellent collection site, along with the libraries. We're gonna be asking corporations and companies in town to hold their own food drives. So, if you work for a lawyer's office or a real estate office, we're not asking you to collect from the public, but to run your own drive. Just a small thing, and we'll come by and pick it up when you're done, and even just one box of food makes a difference, okay? We do have a flag raising coming up in October, which starts the Feed Clifton, and we will end, of course, like everyone ends, at Joe and Ricky's for a sugar overload and some coffee, and he has a cappuccino machine now, so it's really nice. Okay, next up, I'm coming here, I just wanted to speak for praise, even though they didn't ask me to, so, but they are collecting baseball gloves and, you know, baseball equipment. We have the praise baseball team, and they need gloves, not only for their own players, but for the people who volunteer to come and be the, what's the word I want to use? Mentor? When there are players that are on the field, each player has their own mentor with them. And a lot of times, people help out, but they don't have gloves or anything. So, we would really appreciate if you have, look through your closets, look through the garage. I mean, I know my brother's had tons of old baseball stuff that just sat there and was rotting. Well, you know what? We actually need it. So, if you want to drop it off at my house, or if you call anyone up here, if you call Ray, Ray knows how to get in touch with me, or Gary, because they're probably sick of me, but if you could help out, we'd appreciate it. me, but if you could help out, we'd appreciate it. Okay? Last off, I know we want to make these meetings shorter. Just a couple of ideas. One, if you would solve the problems, we wouldn't have an hour of people up here complaining. Okay? I mean, seriously, it, this is why I can't be on council. Because honestly, I would have put in like ten dog parks by now, just so that Bart can stay home. Yeah? I would have done a lot of these things just so that these people aren't coming out every Maybe we just need to solve some problems. Okay? And I'm just going to add my two cents, I didn't get to read that whole report, uh, because it was fifty-three pages, which was really long. Okay? And very technical, but I was a little shocked that we're giving grant money back. We shouldn't be giving grant money back, ever. Okay? And then also in the grant section, it also says that where we spent grants, we overspent them. If we asked for two hundred thousand, we built a one-point-two-million-dollar park. Okay? We got to stick to the amount. And lastly, I'm begging you to talk to our Assemblywomen and our state senator. Okay? Clifton has not asked for anything. Kate May had a whole recreation center built. Okay? We've asked for nothing. You need to ask now to get it next June. So, Gary, shall I leave this?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Kim Castellano Maharav, and also the director, founder of Power of One. I'm actually here tonight, um, just to, I came early because of the first early meeting. Um, for some of you know that I do serve on the Botany CID. Um, but on my way here, I got the message that it was postponed, but I just wanted to just, uh, before my public announcement, just to, to remind you that I, as a person, I live, work, and serve in the Botany Village area. So serving on that board, um, I've always wanted to, but this time I'm really just doing it and I'm, it's a great team and we have good, great plans for the Botany area. Um, we want Botany to be a place where the families that live there, there's, you know, six hundred families that are living in school twelve, that, that are going to school twelve, that live in that area. So we have businesses, we have beautiful restaurants. We want to keep those as restaurants, not nightclubs. And I know that this is not now the time to talk, but I really want us to start being mindful that when we're approving these things down in the Botany area, we have thousands of people who also live there. So I live there, work there, um, and serve that community. So on behalf of the six hundred families that we serve in that area, please be mindful and considerate. They don't know about these meetings that they can come out to and speak on behalf of a business that when they walk outside, there's fights or there's bars or there's, they're, they're walking over it and through it with their children. Uh, working in school twelve in those years, I remember there's children coming to school late because they said drunkers were outside. So, you know, just, please, just be mindful, but I don't want to, um, you know, like again, I'm passionate about the Botany. We have great plans, uh, that are happening there. We, beautiful restaurants, no nightclubs. Um, also a public announcement, our seniors we care program, the fitness, uh, the ladies are in, gentlemen are so excited that we are coming back. Um, Udi is our instructor, September fourth is the first. The whole month is September, I will be there. We sign our new memberships. So if you're interested in the fitness, it is on Thursday, Fridays, same schedule, same instructor, same format you have to fill out. Uh, we also are starting a new program. It's an eight-week grief share program, thanks to Hope Reformed Church. They're allowing us to put that very sensitive, um, group in their nice little community room in the basement. Uh, our stress support group will also be at the senior center. I'm really excited, I'm exhausted. Uh, the past three days, our community has come together again, but I have to say before, I did not announce the, the total of backpacks that we did. I want to cry because we've been doing this since two thousand and eleven and it started with seventy-five backpacks by a request from school twelve principal, Mrs. Tally. Uh, if some of you don't know the story, how we started the school supplies was, I was on the track, um, with Relay for Life with one of the school teachers. And I says, you know, I have this passion to really help the children in my community. So she says, well, we need to connect you with Mrs. Tally. I met Mrs. Tally and there went seventy-five backpacks. And then every year it grew and grew and grew. So before COVID, we were up to twelve hundred backpacks going to our school system. Um, COVID came and you know what happened with that. We went to pencil pouches. We never stopped. But this past week, we've been collecting and packing and sorting and we did one thousand fifty backpacks as of today. I still can't believe, our numbers are right back there. I did not do this, I don't, I think I packed six backpacks. I'm the one running around. Uh, my daughter Kelly, she orchestrated all the volunteers and they showed up, two to six, A-one affordable, opened up their basement. Everybody was just dropping off. Saint Peters this year collaborated with us, the sheriff's department, so it really came together. I want to go in the corner and I really want to cry. Every child that is pre-registered on our database, now mind you, six hundred families are in our database, they all signed up, we know where you, they live, they give us their name, they give us their address, their zip code, and what school the children go to and how many kids. We know exactly where us, our school supplies are going. All Clifton. So in our, so I'm very happy, but again, thank you so much. Um, again, let's not forget Botany.
Thank you. Okay, I think, um, Mike, we have one person on in the waiting room, uh, Ms. Elizabeth So if you'd like to state your name and address and, um, you could unmute yourself. And then if you wish to speak, um, just give your name and ad, address and, uh, you can begin.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Grabowski and city council members. Elizabeth O'Callahan, um, Aquinac Gardens. Um, I'd like to thank you for your time. I'm here today as a resident who deeply cares about our city and the direction that it's heading in despite the potential, the potential, despite our potential to evolve the city through innovation. I'm returning to the council after nearly one year since I first raised concerns about the overdevelopment in my neighborhood and throughout the city. Concerns that unfortunately have become a reality far worse than I had imagined on a fiscal, environmental, and emotional level. What was once a peaceful and beautiful area is now the site of ongoing construction that now directly affects my home, my family, and the city-owned easement that we have respectfully maintained for thirty-seven years since the purchase of the home. The overdevelopment is no longer just near our property, it is literally in our backyard. And what is most troubling is the lack of oversight and accountability throughout this process. Basic construction guidelines have been ignored and, and not taken, and in taking accountability on our part. I waited in good faith that the city and contractors would work collaboratively to respect property. For example, despite the city requirement, no construction fence was ever installed or put up on the adjacent, adjacent property when work began last fall. It remained that way until I personally brought it to the city's attention, as you all know through an email, long after damage had already been done, including the installation of a trans, including the installation, installation of a transformer, um, near our property. Because why? We needed to support the two very oversized homes replacing what was once a single modest family ranch on a beautiful, beautiful piece of property with many trees that no longer exists. This isn't just about inconvenience, it is about the city's failure to protect longstanding residents during construction and change and enforce its own rules. A myriad of complexities resulted from the poor planning of this site alone. So I can only imagine throughout the city how this has impacted others. And this has solely been for fiscal gain. This makes me seriously question it, just the priorities of the city at this point. Because it's clearly not the protection of existing properties or the interest of longstanding residents. It appears the city's standards seem to shift entirely based on what maybe a contractor is asking of them. Again, the trees on our property remain untouched for decades, yet now, due to the city's approval of a subdivision where they have removed, they have been removed, causing significant damage to our land, as you are all well aware. The subdivision was clearly not designed with care or consideration, but solely to maximize space for profitability, showing little regard for preserving the landscape or preventing flooding. Furthermore, a retaining wall has been built directly on the property line without any setback. When I raised concerns, zoning officials who did the clerk's boat with me stating that there was no setback ever required for a retaining wall, despite the wall being constructed over a city-owned storm drain. And if the city is truly in need of revenue, I encourage you to start with enforcing parking regulations in my neighborhood alone. We could single-handedly fix your deficit. Commercial vehicles are being parked overnight for days at a time, including on lawns, in parks. Addressing this would not only generate revenue through fines, but what my hope is, restore a basic level of respect and decorum for residential properties. I do want to thank Leanna and, at the city manager's office, uh, she has encouraged me to reach out and I've tried to be respectful over time. I also want to thank Giuseppe from DPW, um, who also was very helpful. Both have been incredibly helpful and continue to support the efforts to resolve this matter. That said, I would like a clear answer regarding the retaining wall that has built, been built directly on or just within, quote, you can't see the air quotes, of the property line. How is this allowed when an easement contains a critical utility, including that storm drain? Um, the zoning, zoning clerk again, did report to me directly that it was okay to be on the property line. Additionally, I would like us to take a lesson from Patterson's recent water failures. These situations show us the cost of waiting too long. It's time that the city be proactive, not perpetually reactive. In closing, I want you to understand, I recognize fully that development is a part of growth and it's necessary. When it's done thoughtfully, it can benefit a community immensely. But when you have experienced, when you've experienced in this case, it's just gone too far for us. It has crossed the line and now it's time for the city to step up. Please take responsibility. Enough is enough.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. DiMarzo.
Seeing no one else, I close public portion.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, Mr. DiMarzo, do you want to comment on anything?
Yeah, I just want to get, uh, what, the first thing I'd like to do is just get Mr. Colloge his answer. Uh, Andy and I and Egan looked it up. What it was?
Uh, this was concerning the penalty for the entertainment license ordinance. Uh, currently, the fine is up to five hundred dollars and the amended ordinance would increase that to, up to two thousand dollars.
Sorry ma'am, we can't.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I appreciate it. Sorry.
All right, I'll run down real quick. Tiffany, uh, members of the CID were in the audience tonight, so hopefully that your concerns were transmitted. They do have a meeting, uh, once a month and, uh, if, if, if I can get an email or contact information with you, you can definitely, I'll attend with you. I, I kind of attend every other one, but, uh, we'll go together and we can, uh, talk to that group and we can, uh, discuss their, their, uh, you know, their vision or whatever it is. Go ahead, ma'am.
Wait, Gary? Gary, just to correct you.
Excuse me, excuse me, councilwoman, you have to ask for the floor.
That's the problem. It's not the downtown, it's not.
Councilwoman, councilwoman. You have to ask for, councilwoman, you can't just speak out. You have to ask for the floor. Mr. DiMarzo is having a conversation with this woman. You have to allow him to finish.
If, if there's, if there's a, a different contact, we'll get you that particular contact. And, yes, ma'am.
Is there a member of this council that's on the meeting? Because I know they're not meeting myself. Mayor, I'm sorry.
And, and, excuse me, miss, if, if, if you wish to speak with Mr. DiMarzo, you could give him a call during the day and he'll answer all your questions because we can't have a back and forth, uh, conversation. I, I'm sorry, but that's how the rules are. Thank you. I have some answers for you after the meeting, okay?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. It, it does get, it does get a bit complicated and then, uh, it's not clear on the record. My voice kind of carries, yours doesn't, so it, it, the mayor is kind of accurate that it gets lost in translation. But I do want to make sure that you understand that we'll get you the, the proper contact. Uh, the cookie was delicious, you know, I have a saying, you don't get a cookie for something you're supposed to do, but it was delicious. Uh, the IA, uh, co, comment, uh, the city is looking, uh, to, uh, progress with the systems that we use for online, uh, access, including open request online. Uh, we went through two different systems. The Nova system has collapsed and the Peak system seems to be absent relative to the things that you want to do as growth. Uh, Mr. Stevens, if I would, uh, Stevens Road comment, if I can get your phone number. We are working with, uh, Passaic Valley. Outwood, I believe, Allwood, I believe is a state road, uh, but any kind of deficiencies the county can, uh, or the township can make a recommendation to the state. Uh, Gary, we are working on your landlord tenant. Um, Nick, I don't really have a, a comment relative to your, to your qualique, it was well presented. Uh, Bart, it, I did say, um, it looks like you were testing missiles, not, not, not a luca, not a nuclear bomb went off. Uh, Donaville, thank you for the shirt. Power One is, is a part of that Botany Village, um, area, so maybe you want to touch base with the young lady up front there. And Mrs. O'Callahan, what was the address, uh, that she had a problem with, with the property? Did, did anybody get the address? She didn't say it? Okay. I, she did touch base with my staff and I will get that in the morning. Um, mayor, that's all I have. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Okay, this evening, we're going to start with Councilwoman Pino, five minutes, um, to get through and then we'll go back to the regular agenda.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. I don't have much to say, but I do want to, just to piggyback off our city manager, just thank first of all, all our speakers that came out. I think this is great to have more people come to the mic and express, uh, their concerns, positive and negative to Ms. Miles. Again, thank you for coming out. I am confident that with the office of the city manager, you will continue that communication and we can address it, uh, for sure. Uh, also, congratulations to our new, uh, small business here in the city of Clifton, Carmella's Sweets. I am super excited for you and I look forward to eating your treat tonight, so thank you for that. Um, Mark, I'm sorry I did not get your last name, but I can't even imagine what it is to not have that basic need of water in the groundwater. So, um, her name escapes me, but we do have representation on the Water Commission from Clifton and our, uh, councilman, Colloge, he used to, he used to actually, um, represent us on that board. So definitely, um, I, I don't want to speak to the count, for the councilmen, but we, we do have something that I kind of pick the brain and see what we can do because something has to be done. Uh, so thank you for your patience on that, but let's, let's address that. Congratulations, Kim. Amazing. Like I, I feel your energy and I think it's great. Keep up the great work and next year it'll be two thousand. So, uh, congratulations on that. That's excellent. Um, so, uh, with that, Donna, hope you had a good vacation. Uh, I guess it was down the shore, but getting away is always nice. Uh, so with that said, I just want to briefly just, um, make some quick announcements, uh, just as a reminder, our amazing Echo Youth Program is gearing up to start for the fall semester, so we're actively, um, recruiting our, our youth who might be interested in participating. Just as a reminder, the youth program is open to all residents, uh, between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four, where they will get for the next fourteen weeks, life skills, work experience, um, and just build community with their peers. So really, really excited to continue this initiative and if you'd like more information, by all means, please visit our website, echoNJ.org, and we also have flyers right outside of, of, um, in the lobby. Additionally, I'm excited to announce that Clifton Behind the Scenes is coming back online. We went on a little hiatus over the summer, just revamped the program, um, so please be on the lookout as we continue to push the program out. And again, the program is intended for you guys, the residents, right? To learn more about what we do here in City Hall, um, and, and what are all the services that we have here that you can help you navigate. that you can help you navigate through that. With that, I want to extend the invitation to my colleagues. Just like before we went on our hiatus, last couple months ago, we did a video. Councilman DiMatto, thank you for participating. The offer is back on the table, so we can have our most updated one. And also, I want to extend the invitation to my other colleagues. I will be reaching out to you guys to see if you're available. Love for you guys to join this initiative. And I believe, hey, that's all I have. I can't remember in two weeks... Yeah, in two weeks, school will be on. So welcome back, and I'm going to miss the summer. So with that, thank you so much. Have an amazing evening, and I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilman DiMatto.
I'm going to start with something positive, because I'm very upset right now, and I need to be careful where I go after this first positive thing. But I want to start on a positive note. Carmella Sweets, you know, I want to walk the line. I'm not supposed to promote private enterprise too heavily on the dais here, but this is one of the prouder moments of my being a councilman. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. It's these little things like this that really change people's lives. You're so impressive. You came here months ago asking for cottage food business. You're paying your way through school. I met with you a few times. I just found you articulate and bright. And I am happy to say I took a bite of your... I'm going to share this with my son, because I'm trying to trim down a little bit. But I wanted to take a bite before I officially was able to say, "Your cookie is fantastic," and I wish you all the best. And I'm sincerely proud that we were able to help you get rolling here, and others like you in Clifton. So thank you. Keep making the good cookies. I'm going to speak a little bluntly, and I don't know how this is going to play, you know, as far as next year's election, and I don't really care. You folks are not getting it. You've been watching the meetings. I've been watching the meetings for years before I was on this council. You're coming up to this microphone. You're asking us to enforce the rules. You're asking for us to look at the rules, make the right rules, make sure the rules are put in place in the right way, and by God, enforce them. You're not getting it. There's one rule in Clifton, and one rule only. And it is the only rule that matters. It's the only rule that will ever be enforced. If it costs real estate developers money, you couldn't get it through this council with a sledgehammer. And if it costs you money, it's coming down on you like rain. That's it. That's the only rule that matters in Clifton. Mr. City Manager, I spoke to you about this issue with people honking at school buses. And I believe that we were talking about, as school gets closer, putting out an information campaign with our communication manager to, you know, tell people, in a polite way, of course, to knock it off and not to do that, and that negatively affects the kids, especially those with special needs. So we need to get rolling on that. I just wanted to bring that up again.
That is in the works.
Thank you, sir. Something else for our communication manager to consider. I would like a robust and powerful campaign to educate people on recycling, because I think we're talking about ways to save money. People throwing out recyclables, it's a big problem. It costs money. And, you know, I think a lot of people, frankly, they just don't know. They're not aware. And, you know, we send out the recycling guide, but we can use social media, we can use technology, we can use our database and phone numbers to maybe do something here with this. And I would like to do better educating our residents on recycling. I'm just going to rapid-fire this until my time runs out, because there's more on this list than I could address in 20 minutes, let alone five. So I apologize. And if any of you out there, if I don't get to your answer, I'm Councilman Chris DiMatto on Facebook. Send me a message, you know, come talk to me. I want to help you. But I think Airbnb is something worth trying. I'm well aware of the downsides. I know that there are some places, particularly in coastal areas, that are ghost towns because of Airbnbs. And there's negatives, and there's loud parties, and everything that Mr. Perino got up and said are negatives. Next year, however, is the World Cup. There's going to be a lot of people from all over the world coming to this area. And I think, as a tester with maybe an end date, I would like to propose to my council colleagues, allow it for next summer, see how it goes. If it's a miserable summer and everybody hates it, we can get rid of it, but we might just bring in a little extra revenue. Even if it's some, obviously, there's going to be people who skate around it. There's always going to be people who take advantage of the system, but...
I'll second if it's a pilot.
Thank you. All right. Well, so I think it's worth considering. Portland Street, and I called you about this the other day, Mr. City Manager. I just wanted to get it on the record here that, you know, they're dealing with some issues with people throwing out construction waste. And also, that bend on that street, trucks get stuck there. It jams up the whole street for 45 minutes. I would like a sign on the end of the street before people turn in, because that needs to be specified based on past practice here. Before people turn into the street, that, you know, trucks should not be driving on this street. They're not going to get around the curve, and they're going to have to back out, and it's a real cluster. That's it. Wow, that went far. Thank you all. Please message me, or call me, or speak to me after the meetings. I'm available for all of you, and I'm sorry that we don't have more time, or that we're not doing better at our jobs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sajakula.
Thank you. Tiffany, Gary, it's the Downtown CID. And it's Angela Montague that runs it. Whether they have meetings or not, no one on this council sits on that. The Botany CID is separate. I'm going to try to go fast. And you're right, I can't stand the litter around everything, but it's the whole city. People are just pigs. If I told you what I find on my lawn, on Dwasline, it would make you sick. But anyway. Gerard, good point about A1, future, planning for the future. Three data centers, said it a long time. The one data center is a major Wall Street brokerage firm that could run their worldwide operations from that building. When it came, did this city get anything from it? Nope. Pam, revamping Allwood Road, I hope it doesn't... Oh, I know. It's Route 46. Route 46, that's a state highway. Gary, that's DOT. It's very dangerous. I know we are working on the overpass for the school. I don't know when that's expected to be in. Airbnb, enforcement will be an issue. But I'm willing to try something. But let's set fees, that we can get something. We have to look at it. Nick, I was sitting here screaming. But since I'm the only one that gets screamed at up here for talking out of order, I couldn't do it. Look in the center. That's the person that needed to control that. And you're right, it is a disgrace up here. Bart, there are no houses of worship that I know of or houses that don't pay taxes. There are houses of worship that are being built, but they are tax-exempt. Sidewalks, we're supposed to have a bond committee meeting. Sidewalks on Allwood Road, don't ask me. The last explanation from previous administration, it didn't follow. You're right. Every new construction is supposed to have sidewalks. Duney Park, I've been screaming about that. Go back and look at my Facebook page. When the city dumped snow there, leaves, trash, even asphalt, broken-up asphalt, it's a disgrace. But that's why we have a new engineer, and hopefully, we're going to have grant writers that can get us money. But that is the forgotten park. It's disgraceful. Donna, I'm willing, and I think if it requires a motion, to put a box in front for the little pantries. Kim, it's not just Botany. There are no nightclubs allowed in Clifton. The city went through big litigation with Pub 46. So these, and we recently turned down a business on 46 because they claimed to be a restaurant, but basically, you can call it anything you want, but it was a nightclub. Elizabeth, I don't know how anything on a city easement is being built. But it's not only there. This is new. And I'd like to hear an answer for that, because a lot of times, we don't get back to hear something. The WPAT property, people forgot, on Broad Street, has a major sewer line, which in, I believe it was 2019, we had to pay to improve. And guess what? There's fiber optic cables running all on our easement. That's now owned by a Chinese, let's call it conglomerate, or probably making money off of the fees. Maybe we should either tell them to move their fiber optic cables or start charging them. Start charging them. Don't even get me started about the nonsense that went on tonight. We, you, I pay a sewer fee. I'm not even hooked up into Clifton sewer fee, as are three of my neighbors, and there are lots of people. You think that's fair for anyone that's not hooked up? But yet, we stood here tonight, and we can't take care and fix something. So keep having this overdevelopment. Keep having Black Prince, okay, whatever Tony's number was, and I'm sure he was right on it. We can't do it. Do you really think people that spent... There was just a house that sold in Rosemar for $2.5 million, and they're knocking it down. Do you think an extra $2,000 was going to stop them? Or are building fees are based on the cost of building? But you can't sit up here and scream, "You want revenues." And then, this was meaningful revenues coming into the city. Yes, we increased fees today, but that's penny-ante stuff. That's penny-ante stuff. And you're right, we need a vision. We need a vision for the future. And guess what? We don't have... Some of us do, but most don't.
Councilman Latona.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry to the speakers tonight. I'm not being rude, but I'm going to devote my whole council privilege to the most pressing matter, our budget introduction. But before I start, I want to say, over the past two weeks, I spent a considerable amount of time with the mayor between flag raisings, Art Center awards, and here at City Hall. We had some constructive conversations about working together and getting things done, as all of us up here owe it to you, the taxpayers. That is why we are elected, and that doesn't mean we're always going to agree. And we aren't supposed to always agree. Live debate is part of the political process, and the checks and balances of government, which makes our country great. Decades of rubber stamping is what put us in this position we are in. However, I know a majority of my council colleagues will work hard to get us back on track. No excuses, but time to deliver results. The mayor and I spoke about the need for more grants, revenue sources. I'm disappointed in you, mayor, tonight. This was handed to us on a silver platter with the sewer fee, and developers' agreements to help fund our quality life issues that we can't do alone without private partnerships. Things like the amphitheater, right here on City Hall grounds, between the Art Center and the Future Museum, City Museum. Something even my council colleague, Joe Colloge, committed to at the Art Center function a couple years ago. I hope he's still on board with that. So mayor, you have my commitment to work with you, as well as my council colleagues, together to move our city forward. I'll keep an open mind and reconsideration on things we don't agree, and work with you on things we do agree. Now, most importantly, on the budget introduction. I'm calling for a special meeting for next Tuesday, August 26, in person via Zoom. I don't care. And at that time, we will vote yes or no on a budget introduction. That includes tax increases and all of our open unresolved legislation we've been trying to pass for years. Nobody will be happy with this proposal, including myself. However, we will start January 1, 2026, with a clean, fresh slate. One, a 4% tax increase, more than the 2.5% tax increase that I'd like to have, however, much lower than the 6.75% introduced last month, or the 10-plus percent some of my council colleagues would do if we would let them. Updating confidential ordinance, Chapter 99, requiring full-time minimum of 30 work hours to receive full-time fringe benefits. Also requiring, updating requiring 20 years of employment with the city of Clifton to receive retirement medical benefits, up from only 10 years currently written. Astonishing every time I think about how that was allowed to happen. Bringing back biometric scanners to City Hall to better account for city employee work hours. Annual performance review is starting in October, completed by all the department heads, by the city manager, and then us, by the governing body for the administration. No more out-of-state travel for training or seminars without a developed standard operating procedure, a need and justification for it, and a requirement by the governing body approval. It's time to tighten our belts. A city of Clifton-wide overtime policy that goes top to bottom on a rotation basis by rank and seniority that will equally distribute overtime to our employees and save taxpayer dollars. Following the state's health medical benefits stature, requiring and ending the practice of medical benefits for elected officials. That being said, increasing council salaries must be part of the next budget process, because if you want to have honest, qualified citizens and not career politicians beholden to developers to serve on this dais, a more reasonable compensation really is required. This is my budget proposal to the taxpayers of Clifton, that I will share with my colleagues in writing for review and city administration to work on updating the resolutions or ordinances, so we can vote on this as part of the budget adoption next week. I will do my best to, I did my best to incorporate all unfinished legislation matters we have compiled over the last few years. If my council colleagues have a better proposal, please share it with the rest of the governing body ahead of next week's budget meeting for review, and I will also consider your proposal. We can't leave next week's special budget meeting without an introduction to the budget. Thank you.
Councilman Colloge.
Just to fact-check, we haven't introduced budget. We're talking about adopting. I guess it's the level hypocrisy that always strikes me. You know, the politicians will sit up here and rail against the people who voted against revenue. But they were the same people who voted against $40,000 worth of revenue a year at the last meeting. I guess they rely on short memories. To Bart, I agree with you. We need to invest in ourselves. And I think you captured exactly what I've been saying for months now. Pay attention to how people vote, not what they say, because actions don't lie. To Gary, nothing prevents a current employee from being able to apply in a national search, and then let the best man or woman win. And it may very well be the internal candidate, but we should cast a wide net. Clifton deserves it. To Mark, this council this year ended 60 years of direct representation on the Passaic Valley Water Commission. So we no longer have anyone on this dais that goes to those meetings and advocates for us. I've been saying for a month and a half now that we should get a hold of our commissioners and bring them down here so that we can explain to them what we need them to do when they go to a meeting, and advocate for our Clifton residents. But I haven't gotten an update on that as of yet. To Donna, and when you get to the grant section, you're going to see that they explain that by canceling the grants, we actually increased our fund balance by $61,000 for the two years that were examined. And that's $61,000 that we can use to offset taxes. To Nick, the forensic audit was pitched to us as $150,000 investment. We were going to find millions of dollars of hidden money. And we were going to find millions of dollars of ways to save money. And here's what we've got. We've got our statutory auditors, that we are required by law to have a look at our books every year. We've had our forensic auditors now say the same thing. We've had a financial advisor for $12,500 say the same thing. The previous city manager say the same thing. The current city manager say the same thing. The CFO say the same thing. There are no hidden piles of money, and that this is a very lean budget. And, you know, we will see people on this dais talk about, "There's fluff, there's fluff, there's fluff." Make the motion to cut the fluff, and we never get a motion. Because the truth is, it's just political theater and speeches on how to deal with a budget that we caused when we started using one-time money to hide the fact that taxes have been going up since 2023. So with that said, I've got a few announcements here. CliftonRec.com, if you want to get any greater information on this. The Officer Concert Free Series at Main Memorial, this coming Sunday, guys on the second floor. Last one is going to be on September 7, and that's going to be Emerald Experience. On August 31, which is a Sunday from 11 to 7, we're having a Clifton food, music, and car show. It's a fundraiser for our veterans. and car show. It's a fundraiser for our veterans, so if you're in town, $5 to get in. Money goes towards our veterans' parades, Memorial Day parades, so please support the cause if you can. And then last up, we have Up Cycling Adventures, sponsored by the Recreation Department. They've been doing this free series all summer. Saturday, September 6th, going to be the last one. They have the kids do crafts using the recycled material that gets dropped off at our recycling center, and they use that opportunity to teach the importance of recycling. And it's a free event, so if you're looking for something to do with your kid on September 6th, come on down to the recycling center. Then lastly, the Clifton Art Center is holding their annual fundraiser. It's going to be Sunday, October 5th, at the Upper Montclair Country Club at 2 o'clock. It's $80 to attend. It'll be a three-course meal with a gift basket and a cash raffle, and you can get tickets at cliftonartscenter.org if you're interested in attending. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Just going to be quick, because we have a long night ahead of us. This Tuesday, like Councilman Latona said, we're going to have a meeting and try to finalize this budget, because we were long overdue, and the longer we wait, the less things we can get done. So we're hoping that we could get all our differences and resolve all of these issues and work together. Another thing, you know, we have some visions for things like, I think Councilman Latona mentioned, we want to put like, on City Hall grounds, we'd like to put an amphitheater so we could have, you know, concerts and things on the city, which would save a lot of money. We could bring the summer concerts here. We could also do stage things. We could do a lot of things. A lot, because City Hall is so big that things really should be held on City Hall grounds. We have parking. We don't disturb the neighbors. It's a good idea, and we've been talking about this for years, so I'd like to get moving on that with probably next year's budget, I guess, Tony, right? I'm not too sure. But we'll try to get some money to get rolling with these things, and we can make small improvements little by little. That's what's going to move the city ahead. And also, we also talk about revenue. A lot of people come up here and they complain about different situations. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about the brown law. That's not a city thing. That has to do with, you know, the Seig Valley water. But, you know, we have a lot of ordinances. They need to be enforced. And that's, that's one of the biggest problems that I hear from most people, that there's ordinances, there's ordinances, but people violate the ordinances and nothing is done. There's no violations. There's no tickets. I think if we step up to the plate and really start enforcement, that would increase revenue. We don't want to hurt anyone, but if people are, you know, violating the law, I mean, there should be some repercussions. So that's one way of starting to increase revenue for next year. So we're going to hope that we have some vision to get all of this done and to increase revenue so that we don't have to worry about the tax issue, because we're going to start the budget early next year. And I think that's all I have right now. I'd like to get back to the meeting. We're going to go back to discussion items before we do the confidential's. So I think we're on discussion item six. Is that right?
Sounds like a plan, Mayor.
And that's the, that's on, we're having a discussion on construction code enforcement updates?
Well, actually, Mayor, you gave us the segue, right? So you were talking about enforcement. You were talking about code compliance, and that was the memo that we sent relative to hiring some additional code enforcement and moving forward with kind of developing a single, a single direction to enforce. So that's what that, what that was, that was that discussion item.
Wait, but I have backflow ordinance as D6.
Correct. Well, that's one of the, one of the elements on the code enforcement is the backflow preventer that we had some issues with earlier in the year. And so that is one of those items, one of those bullet items that are in the code, the construction office that needs to be addressed. So all those different things in the ordinance or in that memo is not in your ordinances that need to be addressed and created.
And what is this about hiring? You said something about hiring?
Yes, now that I have the dedication by Ryder, I'd like to bring on another code official that's specifically doing some of the issues that are being reported through the, through the SDL system and through the, through the residents. So he will maintain a specific direction of customer, of customer complaints, of resident complaints.
Is this a part-time? Will this be a part-time?
No, it will be full-time.
Is this the, I believe when the head of the building department had come trying to get his case for the dedicated Ryder, he said he only had part-time people. So if he has all this money, why doesn't he have full-time people rather than?
He will tomorrow.
Well, one person, but the inspectors he has, my understanding was they were part-time.
Well, the inspectors he has are code, subcode inspectors, and they're not specific to what this gentleman will be doing.
So we have, I understand what you're saying, that's the plumbing inspector, that's the building inspector.
Correct.
That's the electrical inspector.
You got it.
You're telling me, in our building department, we've had no one for all these years doing code enforcement?
Well, I believe that we're going to have a specific person now that is going to do the series of complaints that have been coming into the office over the last couple of months.
Okay, let's, let me try it a different way.
Well, no, I understand what your question is, and I don't really know the answer.
You don't know the, well, that's what it seems like to me, and if we had all this money, no wonder we have, I mean, I'm sorry, you know, and the residents seem to be, keep them coming residents to me, because you know they get forward over.
They do, and that's why we're getting, and they get, and that's why we're going to take care of it.
But we need some action. So it's really disheartening now for me to sit here and find out, and I'm not blaming you, you are new to this game, but that we don't have or haven't had somebody in code enforcement. Henry, the one meeting you missed because you're on vacation, I mean, this is, no wonder we have selective enforcement. Selective enforcement.
Well, I don't know, but selective enforcement or poor enforcement, but we're going to, we're going to change that.
All the things that I sent you haven't been addressed yet, so that's selective.
So then, Mayor, if I may, to clarify, you're asking us to change the table of organization?
Relative to what, sir?
To this code enforcement.
We're going to add a code enforcement officer to the, to the construction office.
Through the table of organization.
If that's what it takes, then I'll look at it, but I didn't think that was necessary, just putting an individual in that office.
Well, what's necessary is if the table of organization has been established by the city council that says you can have four of these, and the funding is available either through a budget and now through a dedicated by Ryder. This is a city manager, this is a day-to-day operation city manager hire. This does not belong with policymakers. Policymakers determine how many code enforcement people we want. Your job is to then fill those vacancies as you see fit. So the question I'm asking is, are we doing an ordinance to allow for the additional hiring of people, or does the ordinance already have that, and you're just giving us an FYI as a courtesy?
I believe it was an FYI, but since you brought that up, I will make sure I see YA and make sure that I get that corrected.
Mayor, through you, didn't that all change when this became a dedicated Ryder? Because the money, they have, they have excess funds that can be only used for the building department.
Correct, and you had, you had an anomaly where, where I believe someone complained about being overcharged after the ordinance changed and the fees increased, I believe the legal end of it.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
That's where that changed.
But that's not what I'm saying is, I believe it's in your purview to do this, because as a dedicated Ryder, it's, the money has to be used in the building department. As while you're looking to use that money, I suggest we put GPSs in our cars so we see in the building department, so we see where everybody is. Because I'm getting really tired of getting all these complaints and nothing is done.
So Mayor, if I may, because I agree with the councilwoman, that's been part of the problem. They would come, you know, before it was a dedicated by Ryder, it was the operating budget. And so the council would then say, "Well, cut that from the budget" or "Have a hiring freeze," and then there was no funding available. So the only real impediment to being able to staff this the way the city manager sees fit is to make sure that the table of organization is appropriately structured so that there are vacancies to be able to hire that person. And now, because it's through a dedicated by Ryder, that's the end of the road. So as long as this council is committed to hiring more inspectors, and in the past, we've cut that from the budget, even though we initially said we want more inspectors, at this point in time, if we want more inspectors, it's now a self-sustaining unit. And so it's just a question of making sure that the table of organization says that this is the number of people we can have, the funding's already in place through a dedicated by Ryder, and the city manager will then wind up doing as he sees fit.
That's the plan.
Okay. Go to discussion item seven, development zoning changes.
Again, as we're talking to some of the larger developers, they have some concerns relative to some of the inhibitors of building within Clifton. And so, again, this is another FYI that Mr. Egan and myself are talking to some of the larger corporations to solicit their, their, their building and their growth inside Clifton. So, you know, these are the, these are the things, I guess, in my two-week book report that I'm doing within the, within my, my time here, and I just wanted to bring these things to you. And as we bring in some developers and we bring in some larger, larger players, that it may be necessary to, to look within our own code to allow these particular developments.
I, I think.
Question?
Yes, I believe you're talking about for commercial and industrial uses, correct? That's what you're looking at, right?
That is correct.
Right, well, I think it's time we get into the 21st century here and do what everybody has done. We are precluding ourselves from getting some big players to come into Clifton. Let us not forget, how many highways do we have in this city? How many highways? There's developers, we have property sitting vacant where the old, what was that called? On 46, Harbor Freight? I, I think this is a no-brainer.
And as you look for economic development and you look into globally to bring in that tax revenue, because you're, you know, you're maxed out. So you, you want to collaborate with the investors, and then you want to use these pilot programs, and you want to use these, these incentives. And so it's kind of a global package that we're, that we're now exploring, and it's positive. I mean, you're 11 miles from New York City, you have 90,000 residents, you have a very vibrant community, and they see the value in those. But again, it's, it's, you know, it's what's good for them, and can they make money? And can, can the municipality benefit?
If, if this requires a motion to?
No, it just, it just, you know, it's, it's very difficult, and normally in some of the other municipalities that I've managed, I've had a little bit of an administrator overview, and I kind of give you my two-week book report, so people kind of know what I'm doing for 12 hours a day here. And, you know, the, these two gentlemen on, on either side of me, we're, we're looking at the big picture. We're looking at these, these larger projects to start bringing in tax revenue.
Well, I think we should be proactive rather than reactive. And I, again, I'm willing, and I'd like to make a motion that Tom and Andy start working on a change of ordinance for this to accommodate.
And again, I believe it's going to be a collaborative between the city, our legal department, and some of the investors or some of the corporate corporations that are looking at Clifton globally. So I don't know if it's necessary relative to make a ceremonial motion, but either way, I just wanted to let you know what we're doing.
Well.
Get to projects, and we'll go forward.
Yeah, well.
So Mayor, just for the public's edification, because this was the document provided to us for D7, 461-12, principal structures and uses. So it sounds to me like we're discussing that for single and two-family detached dwellings, there should be only one principal structure per lot. For commercial and industrial uses, there shall be only one principal use per lot, although more than one structure shall be permitted. If there are several leases or owners occupying separate principal structures, a subdivision shall be required so that there will be only one principal structure per lot. This is what we're, this is our jumping off point?
It is, it is, Councilman, and I think it's well, it's well-placed to use that particular ordinance. And so it might even look at a master plan overview, so you can start reusing these industrial areas, so there's less prohibition, less bureaucracy to allow some of these developments. But that seems to be one of the more problematic ordinances in development at this time.
We look forward to more.
Yeah, I'm actually, I've been complaining for years. One of the issues has not been allowing multiple uses on a property for commercial use, because the new business model is, it's not just Wawa, it's Wawa and a, and a gas station. That is the new business model of the 21st century, and based on our ordinances, they can't open a Wawa here unless they get a variance, and they inevitably get denied the variance. And so we're hurting our ability to track the commercial base by using a system that is antiquated by today's standards. And then as for single and two-family detached dwellings, we've already ascertained that people are going to be more than willing to pay $2,500 for a sewer hiccup, so we should be fine.
It's, it was a great example, but I don't really want to mention any names of the corporations.
Mayor?
Yes, Spurling Park, that seemed to be a debate between the Recreation Committee and, and the open space, so I was looking for some direction, if you wanted to go back to consideration, Mr. Colloge and Ms. Mary, my mouth's getting dry, and I do apologize, but that, this was one of those debates, basically, big park, small park, open space, capital bond, so I was just looking for some direction relative to that project.
I would respectfully, since we've hired a new engineer and I sit on the Open Space Committee, first, we were not told about the Recreation Committee's vote not to do the bigger park, to do a smaller park. And quite frankly, we were told we had engineering plans for this, and we don't. It took, they were supposed to be sent the next day. They weren't. It took four weeks, and it was pictures. My concern is, and we really need to let our new engineer, outside engineer, the consultant, come and take a look at this, because we were cited in, of course, this forensic report of overspending on grants. We don't have any plans. One of my concerns is that I'm not sure that people understand what an all-inclusive park was. And when we talked about it at the meeting, it was only parts of the park were all-inclusive. Well, Spurling Park, you're going to have to have handicap parking. Where's the handicap parking? So can we let, and I don't know what this Game Time Community Champions Grant, this was never listed on one of our grants, can we let this new engineer come up to speed and give us a plan, what he thinks? Because quite frankly, it was all over the place, and we were given the wrong information. So I respectfully ask, let him start. This is not, we've had this grant for two years. This isn't a rush, rush, rush now. Let's do it right. Let's do it right, please.
If, if that's the direction, then that's the direction, Councilman.
We're going to still have some, some discussion on this, City Manager, thank you. I respectfully disagree. I mean, we talked about how we lost grant funding on Surgeon Park, because we have multiple grants that are open and not completed, and it's impeding our ability to apply for new grants. And here we are, looking at another grant, and we're going to now stall and decide whether or not we're going to have someone else look at it, which we're going to pay up to $10,000 a month to have them look at it, and they're going to come back essentially with the same conclusion. Bottom line is, is that we have grant money that has been awarded to us to move forward with this project. We do have a proposal for the project, and ultimately, we need to find out how we're going to pay our fair share. And when we were at the Open Space Committee meeting, by a 5-4 vote, they wanted to see us bond for the money. Now, that's a recommendation coming from Advisory Committee, so we have the ability, as the council, to have the final say in this. We're going to have over $1 million in our open space fund this year. We need to start spending our open space money. And borrowing is going to incur interest costs, the open space money, as our share for the project would wind up costing us nothing, because we've already collected it. So as far as I'm concerned, I, you know, to stall this further and to pay someone $10,000 a month to look at this and say, "Yep, it's good to go, let's go," I think that we should just move forward with this project, and it would be my recommendation to go with open space money to fund our, our balance.
Just to follow up, if we can walk and chew gum at the same time, I don't want to stop progress, so I'm okay with going forward, but at the same time, if we can have eyes look at it to make sure our Ts are crossed and Is are, Is are dotted, you know? look at it, to make sure our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, you know, I'm okay with that, if that's a possible solution.
Councilman, to use open space, is this suggestion?
I'm okay with going forward with this, but because we're bringing in somebody new, an engineer, to have him look over, to make sure everything's status quo, and try to do both at the same time, and if it isn't, we pull back, if not, we pull forward.
Correct, but the direction is to use open space. Is that what I'm hearing?
That would be my motion. In order to be able to move forward with this project, and if Councilman Latona wants to have someone review it before we actually award a contract, that, you know...
To make sure we're good, but I'm okay with going forward and using it.
But yes, I think that it would be, it would be more prudent from a fiscal perspective, particularly for the taxpayers right now. The taxpayers have already given us $1 million for open space. So, as far as I'm concerned, our share should be coming out of open space, and I will make the motion that the balance of whatever the grant does not cover for this project should be funded through open space.
Wait, I have a question. You know, we talk about, this grant was $250,000. After we received the grant, now all of a sudden, we're changing the whole perspective of a plant, of a project. That took two years, and we still don't have one single solitary plan. And your people are sitting up here and taking the majority of what we have today in the open space and just saying, spend it, when, I'm telling you, there was not one... Gary, you were there?
I was there.
How long did it take you? How long did it, we didn't get the engineer plans, and I specifically asked 100 times, do we have engineer plans? No. What we got were pictures of what a park would be. And this isn't an all-inclusive park. Parts of it were. You can't have parts. It's all-inclusive. What are we doing here? Why can't, it's, we're not losing this grant. We're not losing this grant, but we hire somebody who knows what an all-inclusive park is. Chris, you sat here and said, you're never going to vote for a park unless it's all-inclusive. I'm telling you that the, you can ask Donna, she was at the meeting, a part of the park is all-inclusive.
There's different levels of all-inclusive.
No, no, parts were not. You couldn't get to parts of the equipment.
I understand that.
Well, that's not all-inclusive.
You can't make every park...
No, but if this...
All-inclusive, some have hills, some have this, so...
But if this park is all-inclusive, it's all-inclusive. Not part of the park is all-inclusive and part is not. What, are you going to have a fence up and say, this is not inclusive? I understand. There's pocket parks that can be done.
So, can I suggest that we, so we are good with open space, but we don't trigger open space yet until we get conceptual plans that are acceptable to the organization?
That works for me.
Let me, let's word that, because it's coming into focus.
Exactly, and that's exactly what Councilman Latona has suggested, that we put a second set of eyes on it to see where we're going, but we're not going to hold up the funding for this, because, to be clear, we have almost $1.1 million in open space money, and we're looking to use $347,000 of it. So, that's roughly 32%, which isn't a majority of our open space. It's actually a minority, because it's much less than 50%. So, the bottom line is, and the motion that was made here, was to basically determine how we're going to fund this. And the motion was to fund it through open space, it was given a second. That's what we're voting on this evening.
Go call, please. Yeah, we had a second.
Councilman Latona seconded.
Thank you. Councilman DiMatto?
No.
No? Councilman Colloge?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula? Council, Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Four yes, two no?
Motion carries.
Motion carried.
Nine, clean and lean updates, verbal discussion only, is that your, Gary?
Yeah, there's no backup on this, and this is another, you know, two-week book report, so to speak, but myself and Egan had taken a week off, so we're kind of a little bit memorializing it, but at the end of the day, it's problematic. There is exposure to the city, and we're looking to change the way that that is done. And some of the recommendations that are coming out from myself and Tom is to take it in as an entire city project, other ordinances that I've been part of, there's a staging fee, and then the staging fee is then added on to by the actual hours of the city employee doing the lean, or doing the clean, and then the administrative fee, and that is bundled, and that goes to the board. So, it's completely a city function, it's insured, it's, there's no outside influence relative to who's getting it and who's not getting it, but there is, there is a problem with that procedure, so to speak, or that particular task. And so, we are looking to clean it up, and hopefully, next weekend, not next weekend, next week, we will have some definitive and some firm direction for you.
Mayor, through you.
Yes.
The City Manager, or Tom. So, can you expand as to see what, as to what are those major problems? Because I can appreciate that we're looking to move in another direction, but based on what I'm hearing, this is a problem now. So, I, I'm a little hesitant that we're going to have to wait till next week to address the problem.
Well, I think next week is when we're going to have, we'll come with some clarity as to the direction of a new, of a new, a new direction. It's the end of the season, so I'm told, so the program is ending anyway. So, you know, it would be my recommendation not to continue with it. I think there's exposure to the city.
No, absolutely, and I appreciate that, but when you say not to continue it, when are you suspending it on that end? Is that going to, is it going to continue till next week? Are you pausing it and then figuring out the next step? What are we doing?
Well, I have to look at what's out there at this point, right? So, there's no pathway for me to fix what might be outstanding, so I don't know if it's a hard stop, or if it's a couple-week stop, and that's one of the things that we're kind of looking at, what zoning has as far as what's in the pipeline relative to what it is. But I, you know, it is fluid at this point. Tom, if you want to kind of find out what, you know, put your thoughts on it relative to anything that you kind of found out. I know we received an email, but I don't know if we got, and again, I don't want to put the man on the spot, he was, he was away for the whole week, but we did receive some emails in an attempt to explain it. But again, the question specifically is a hard stop or a teeter-out? Most likely, at this point, for the next, at least, week or so, it's got to be, it's got to be a teeter-out, so otherwise, the grass will keep growing, then who does it?
Yeah, but, you know, the fact that you pointed out that we have some serious liability, I think, even if we can't do a hard stop, it has to be sooner than later. And I'm going to respect your request for another week, just to get all your ducks lined up, but I'd like this conversation to be put back for the next council meeting, and I'd like to continue the conversation, because I'd like to further explore what exactly was happening all these years, that with you coming in with a fresh pair of eyes, have just realized that we have been exposed in a huge liability. So, I like that to be very transparent, and what exactly, and how exactly it happened. And I love to get some of my colleagues' feedback, because based on my understanding, our taxpayers were the ones being hurt by this arrangement. But we'll stop there, and if you guys can please ensure that this goes back, I'll be following up next week to see what that is, but in two weeks, we're back on, and this is a discussion for the public to know.
Yeah, the backstory, I don't know. I mean, this is a 20-year program, and again, I'm here 100 days. So, you know, how it happened, who it happened with...
I'm interested to know how it happened. It's still, it's nice to know how things happen, so know how we're moving forward. So, yeah, I really would like a summary of what happened, how it happened, and, you know, we have people here who've been long enough that they can give us some insight of where did we go wrong here. So, more to follow.
That's fair enough. I mean, I have clean hands, so it doesn't matter to me what the end result is. The end result is, is that the program has to change.
Outstanding. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Let's, last one is PSENG, Business Energy Savings Program, that's another verbal discussion.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, again, as part of that two-week book report, so we sat down with the efficiency team of PSENG, they had, they had three members of their team, actually four members of the team, a letter from them came in late this afternoon. I did provide it to the clerk and to the board. You know, they, they have a series of programs that I've used in other municipalities that are very beneficial, and some of them are direct install. Direct install replaces equipment of like size with their grant programs, they have upgrade programs, they have efficiency programs. So, the direct install program was immediately put into place, or the application we put into place for the Recreation Center, is that, is that the one that the AC failed on? So, you have a 10-ton unit over there that needs to be replaced. PSENG said that's a perfect use of the direct install. They also are going to, they're also going to...
Does that mean they're paying for it? They're replacing?
Yes, yeah, there is, there is a, there is a grant program. Yeah, there might be a matching cost, so we did one for another municipality, I think it was in the $300,000 range for the, for the air handlers on top of the municipality, and I think it cost the municipality $50,000 total. So, there are, there are programs out there. And again, you know, the other, the other issue was the lighting and the switching in City Hall, so the place doesn't look like it's glowing at night. So, there's sensors in there, there's high-efficiency switching and lighting, and then the other, the other larger component was a different program. I got to look at the letter again, but either way, I mean, it's something...
So, a few years ago, we talked about putting charging stations in City Hall.
Correct, so that was the other one. So, that was the, that was the program. So, you know, the request was to put charging stations on City Hall, and the review of the circuitry or the, or the infrastructure was non, was non-supportive of that, and since the, since there's a program that, if you're putting charging stations, then PSENG will replace the infrastructure of your municipal hall here. So, there's a, there's a program globally, that if you do certain things for, on the green side, then they will precipitate a upgrade of our electrical system.
Was a number put on that? Because that sounds expensive.
Everything is expensive, right, Councilman?
But I'm saying, it's a grant.
So, yes, it is, it is a program that they have, and again, that's something...
What kind of number was that?
That was, the introductory level, the letter is one page, so we started by giving all the electric bills and the buildings that we wanted to target for upgrades, that's how it started. So, finance was, was very helpful in facilitating, getting them the information that they need to start making the termination. And then, the other thing, Councilman Colloge, was the, I got the actual representative in front of me, and that's how we finally got to the bottom of the park. And so, it took a little bit of time of getting the right person, but she happened to be at that meeting, and then we started asking about rates and polls and why those lights are off, and now we have a communication, now we have a dialogue going with that individual that's actually the head of that particular department. So, I'll see if I can get an answer for you with the questions that you have provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, I've been a big proponent of this for years. The lights at parks should not be funded, or should not be paid for by these, these little leagues. They don't have the money to do this. This is, this is crazy. Athena Steel, we pay those lights, they don't pay for it, and so, why can't we pay for, again, and is there, has to be a program that they have for recreational fields, fields? There's no way that that, and the reason why they were turned off, because they had outstanding bills, that they couldn't afford, the little leagues couldn't afford it. Do you know the little leagues also have to maintain the clubhouse, which were, are owned by the City of Clifton? Putting new roofs, putting new bathrooms in? This is craziness.
If it belongs to the city, you know, the city should maintain it.
The city should maintain it.
Yeah, so...
But I, I would appreciate if you look into, there's no way that little leagues should be paying for the electric at the fields at Sturgeon Park. They don't pay for it at Athena Steel Park.
If that's the case, we need to have one set of rules and fix that problem.
Correct, yes, this is outrageous, I'm sorry. I've been like this for years, so let's make it happen.
I'll remind my colleagues that we actually voted on this last year, and that's exactly what we voted on, that the city was now going to take over the payments on that.
Yeah, there is a little dip in the rate, I mean, it wasn't substantial, but...
It's $10 a month, big deal.
But it was, it was, and that we control it, correct.
If we don't pay, if they don't pay for it at Athena Steel, one set of rules, no one should pay for it, and they should not have to be paying for new bathrooms and clubhouse roofs. What they should be using the little league money is for helping and promoting the sport, not paying for our infrastructure.
So, can I just clarify, someone had men, someone had mentioned there was a motion last year that, that we were going to take over that meter, is that correct? Is that...
I don't remember that.
No, the motion that we made was that we were, that the city was now going to be responsible for the lighting at Sturgeon Park, so that our little leagues can play. That was the motion, it was seconded, it was unanimous vote, but I think the councilwoman makes a very valid point, and so does Councilman Latona, in the sense of everyone needs to be treated the same. So, we need to find out if the little leagues over at Main Memorial Park are having to pay for the lights, and we have to find out if the little leagues over at Zelenka Park are paying for that, we need to find out if lights are at Nash Park, and if they're paying for that. And if that's the case, then my motion would be that the city is now going to take over paying the utilities for lighted sporting events for all of our facilities, not just the select one or two. So, that would be my motion.
I'll second that, and that's the way it should be. It's ridiculous, all for Athena Steel and nothing for anybody else.
I assume everyone would agree with that, right? Okay. All right, so now, we need to go back into confidential, close session.
Mayor, before we do, I, I'm sorry, I went to the ladies' room and you ended your talk. I just had one question or one comment in, for our meeting next week, for our budget. After we introduced the budget, there was a motion to remove $3 million from the budget. So, we expect, since that was passed by a four-to-three vote, I think it was, will you come back with us next meeting, or at the budget meeting, with $3 million worth of cuts? Thank you.
Was that motion made? I don't remember that motion being made.
I don't remember that motion being made either.
Well, I'll check the minutes, it's easy enough to verify. Thank you.
Quite honestly, if we go to a 4% tax increase, that's half that number. I do not plan on coming here next week and talking in circles all night, I'm telling my colleagues right now. So, put your best plan forward, we're going to vote.
So, maybe, well, maybe then, there has to be conversations before that meeting, and maybe it's showing good faith and reaching out to your colleagues and sharing some of that, as opposed to just bringing it all now and expecting us to digest it, but just a thought. And I don't remember that motion being...
The meetings next week, I brought it all forward.
Yes, I understand the meetings next...
For my colleagues to bring it all forward.
And so, just to clarify, however, you know, moving from a roughly 6% increase to a 4% increase is actually a 2/3s number, not half. And listen, you know, you're calling a meeting, and I'm going to be on vacation, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to attend, but essentially, what we're starting to argue about now is we're going to figure out a way to save $1.50 a month on taxes, because that's the difference between a 4% and a 6% increase. Meanwhile, we have Bart Servo, that makes a valid point about what am I paying for taxes, and nothing's getting done. I had a gentleman complain to me about how much he pays in taxes in Lakeview, over $10,000 in taxes, and he's showing me lamp posts that are broken and haven't been replaced in over a year. And I, in good conscience, can't look a man in the eye and say, yeah, but you know what? You're only paying $10,100 instead of $10,110. And so, I think that we need to be very careful about how we're looking at what we're going to do with this budget, because you're going to start arguing about pennies and nickels and dimes, and people are going to continue to come to the microphone and tell us, why don't we have this, and why don't we have that, and why aren't you doing this, and why aren't you fixing that? And it all boils down to, because we're refusing to fund doing it.
Okay, can I have a motion, can I have a motion to go into confidential?
Executive session.
Executive session. Executive session.
We didn't, yes, we didn't do two, we only did one. I want a separate on 4/26, 4/27, and 4/30. They can be together.
4/26, 4/27.
No, you can do them together, 4/26, 4/27, and 4/30.
So do I have a motion to...
Well, I'm trying to understand, and before we move along, I agree, Kathleen. So if we voted, if we voted for it in the work session, we're not voting on it out here now, right?
Oh, right, so that's...
We already voted for 4/26.
Yes, we did, so I did.
And we already voted for 4/30.
You're right, Joe, you're right. My mistake, you're right.
We're pulling 4/25 and we're pulling 4/29.
Yep.
So the only things that we really have left here, if my score sheet is good, is 4/24, which is the bill list.
Mm-hmm.
4/32, which is the developer agreement.
Nope, back up to 4/27, reclassification of payments.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Right, and we requested a separate vote on that, okay? So 4/27 and then we've got 4/32, right, which is the developer agreement.
Right.
And then we got 4/35, which is the cancellation of a mortgage.
Right.
And 4/36, which is congratulations for retiring.
Yep.
And we already did the resolution to go into closed session, so it's only those four and you want a separate vote on one of them, correct? 4/27.
Five there, bud.
Was it five? It's late, I can't count.
You have 4/24, 4/32, 4/35, 4/36, 4/37.
And 4/27.
Oh, no, 4/27.
Right, and a separate vote on 4/27, correct? Mary?
Yeah, that's fine.
On a separate for 4/27?
Just on 4/27, or just note my, yeah, separate on 4/27.
All right, so I'll make a motion to move Resolution 4/27-25, which is the reclassification of payments.
And we have, we don't have to go through the whole thing, we just note the abstention on that one week?
Yeah, you can note my abstention. That's fine.
So then... I had a first, did I get a second for that?
Then we move the group with 4...
Move the group?
Well, first, we need a second on 4/27.
I need a second on 4/27.
Second.
I'll call the roll.
Yes.
Councilman Damato?
I thought we were just noting.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Colloge?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
No.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Move the group?
I'm sorry, can I have a separate vote on 4/31-25?
Second.
I thought we voted that on last...
No, we did that at the last meeting, but now we're doing the actual resolution. At the last meeting, there was a motion to second.
Okay, so separate roll call.
I need a second.
Move 4/31.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato?
This is 4/31.
4/31.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Colloge?
This is $15,000 we can't afford, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Question. I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski? Yes. That's four yes, one no, one abstain.
Motion carries.
Move the group?
Move the group. Second.
No objections.
Latona, Councilman Sadra Kula. Call the roll? Yes?
There's no exceptions.
Okay, no objections.
So then you will wind up recording that as a 6-0 vote? That's how this works?
Unless you want a separate vote on it.
No, I just want to make sure that...